Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 15, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Tamara Gasolum. Commissioner Ogilvy, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance student for today?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. My intern Kayla, who is a student with UTEP and has been with us before to do the pledge, will lead us in the pledge once again today.
Welcome.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Welcome.
And now we will receive an invocation by Father Michael Gallagher.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. O God, who creates, recreates in blessings, we ask you to be present as the county commissioners meet. Guide their deliberations so that all that they do be for the benefit of all your people. Give them the gift to listen to and be present to those who speak before them today. May all their work advance peaceful cooperation among all the residents of our county. We make our prayer relying on your goodness. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Always appreciate you being with us. Thank you, Father.
Always a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, just want to welcome all of you to Commissioners Court on behalf of myself and our commissioners. We thank you for being here. I know we're coming into, from a situation on an attempt on our ex precedent. We're also going into the fifth anniversary of the tragedy, the Walmart tragedy. So as we're working through it, we've been putting together a beautiful mural. But a lot of the wounds open up again, you know, on all the victims' families. Sort of by now, they're thinking that maybe things are behind us. And so we know that we still have a long ways to go to heal our nation and that we unite with each other. So asking, you know, that you do participate in the Healing Garden is going to be just an amazing, you know, sort of a, just an honoring of the victims, but also moving our community forward. And so we'll have a lot of activities on August 3rd, which is a Saturday, so all day we'll have that. But I think it's, the timing is perfect as well for us to honor our community, but also, and the victims and their families, but also as a way to, El Paso always trying to get everybody to get stronger, be united. And I feel that we're still the stronghold of humanitarianism and doing things that are right. So we have a beautiful community. So I welcome you to Commissioners Court and thank you for being part of our government process. Thank you.
Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4W. We do have a correction to read in for item 4N. Item should be grant award approved and authorized the Public Works Parks and Recreation Department to accept El Paso Water Utilities Interlocal Agreement Grant Program awarded in the amount of $56,960.31 with a contingent cash match of $9,000. Funding for the $9,000 is available in General Fund G Admin Transfer Out Grant Match. Contract number 2024-0400. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Ogilvy.
I would like to pull items R and S. Are there any others?
If not, I'll move to approve. I'm not here. I don't have my...
Yeah, mine's not... Oh, here we go. Are you, are you?
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Sorry, mine's moving a little bit slow.
Judge Samaniego, your vote?
So I marked mine, Jessica, but it's not showing up on your screen.
Yeah, neither is mine.
I can take it here. What was your vote?
Aye.
Judge?
Is Melissa nearby? No?
I could take your vote here, Judge. Would you like to vote, Judge?
A verbal...
Yeah.
A motion carries. Item five resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution proclaiming July 20, 2024 as boxing at the lake in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, it's a privilege to introduce this resolution. You know, there's great things that continue to happen in our county. And one of these new things that are coming up is a, obviously for boxing amateurs. And we really appreciate the input and the proposal for this project. You know, in coordination with Judge Samaniego's office, you know, promoting amateur fighters from El Paso and allowing them to opportunity to perform is really a great opportunity for everybody in this county. And the promoter is giving away tickets to local boxing gyms. So this gives us another first of its kind event at Ascari. So I'll go ahead and read the resolution at this time. Whereas El Paso, Texas has been the home to some of the greatest boxers to have entered a boxing ring and have a long proud history of promotion of this sweet silence. And whereas boxing at the lake is a USA Boxing, LBC Local Boxing Commission sanctioned event, this event will showcase not only our local youth, but our out-of-town athletes as well. All pugilists are certified under USA Boxing and this event will count towards advancing in future tournaments. The card will feature current national champions and first-time novices. El Paso's and surrounding areas best amateur talent, 20 to 25 bouts on the fight card. And whereas partnership with the Warriors Edge Boxing, who are committed to developing young athletes to becoming great champions of the Olympic platform and pro ranks, and the El Paso Sports Commission have allowed for this first of its kind event to showcase our local talent. And whereas Saturday, July 20, 7:00 PM at Ascari Park, the opening bell will sound for boxing at the lake. Therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Commissioners Court wish to proclaim July 20, 2024 as boxing at the lake at Ascari. In an official recognition thereof, the county judge and the commissioners of the county hereby affix their signatures this 15th day of July, 2024.
Second.
We had a motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open.
I vote aye. I feel like my technology going in the right direction.
Motion carries.
Podium's yours.
Well, good morning. My name is Luis Trevino.
Luis, welcome.
Thank you, sir. I'm the owner of Warriors Edge Boxing Gym Promotions. I also retired from the county 27 years with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. In my tenure there, I did a lot of work for youth through my boxing gym. We started a mentorship program. And the reason why I even mention that is because this event is geared for at-risk youth. A lot of the kids participating in the amateur program come from broken families, not only families, but just surrounding El Paso's. And it's, you know, boxing is like a poor man's sport, right? They don't have money for even the memberships, right? At my gym, we don't even charge them at times. We lend them equipment and we pay the fee for them. And it's great that I can work with the government of El Paso, thanking the judge, Mr. Coronado, Commissioners Court, Stephen also that helped me a lot, the Sports Commission, Tony and Omar at the El Paso County Coliseum, to make it awesome at the Ascari at the lake, to bring these kids and show them under the lights and see what the talent we have here in El Paso. And some of the proceeds will go to the mentorship program that we have established at Warriors Edge Boxing Gym. And it's going to be a great night of boxing in El Paso. Because not only that, it kicks off Fight Week for the WBA title fight that we have July 27th here at the Coliseum. Never in El Paso we had a title fight of that nature, which Stephanie Hahn will be the main event. She will be July 20th there, also as one of our guest of honors to kick off Fight Week for Ring Wars. So it's a great week of boxing here in the Sun City.
Thank you, Luis. Tony, Lupe. Go ahead, Tony. You're being called on.
I know, right? No, I mean, first of all, we couldn't have done it without Tim's staff with Amy and Lupe and doing that. And I took some advice from Commissioner Ogilvy when she said you need to go meet with Tim and his staff. And we did that. We spent, it was Omar, the other myself. We spent an hour. And I can tell you, the last conversation we had, you know, I was looking outside the conference window there and I was like, "Man, what if we brought boxing to Ascari?" You have the border as a backdrop and you have the lake. And I told him that. And Tim's off, "Can you do it?" I go, "Let me find out." First thing I did straight when I got to my office is I call Trevino and I go, "What do you think about boxing at the lake?" He goes, "Let's do it." And there it began. And that's how it started. It's a great event. It's going to be awesome. Granted, I'd love to have it at the Coliseum, but I mean, doing something like this, you don't get this anywhere in the US where you're going to have the border backdrop and a nice beautiful lake at Ascari. So we invite everyone to come out, you all to come out too, just to check it out. This is going to be the first of something that we look to do more of. As you've known, with Warriors Edge and the Paso Sports Commission, we've built a reputation. We brought Ring Wars and we brought boxing to the El Paso County Coliseum. And less than a year, we have the biggest, one of the biggest championship fights at the County Coliseum. So it's a reputation that we're proud of and we're going to do it here at Ascari too. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Tony, and to our Parks Department. Any comments? You're welcome to... Lupe?
We just want to thank you and we hope to bring more events like this to the Parks Department and to the county.
Thank you. I can't tell you the excitement that we should have. You know, this is a boxing community. It's long overdue. We've talked a lot about it, but now it's coming to fruition. And I really feel this is exciting. Can you imagine you're combining boxing, Ascari at the park, the Coliseum? I mean, it's got all the iconic, you know, dimensions of our community, the things that we love the most. And boxing, I think, you know, it's interesting because it's a little aggressive, right? But at the same time, it brings unity because it's something we love. It's something that's come long ways. It connects us with Juarez incredibly because Juarez is a really, you know, the boxing capital kind of thing and bringing it all together. So really excited. I'm very glad that Commissioner Coronado and I are really making sure that this happens, that it becomes a great thing. But I want to encourage the community that it's, you know, we could tee it up. We could do all these things, but we have to get the community involved. We have to get the community really to appreciate the importance of something that is part of our history. I mean, we all have someone. I have, you know, Lefty, my cousin was just an amazing boxer, loved boxing. And so we all have a touch point to that. My dad was a historian. He could tell you everything about boxing in every element with everyone. He's got, you know, pictures with different boxers. And so it's very exciting. And I know it's part of our history. And, but we always, we've always said, you have to nurture your history. You know, it doesn't just sort of evolve by itself. You have to appreciate it. And then we could bring it forth to the younger generation. So I think this is going to be great, great event. Both of them are just going to be amazing. Just I've been involved and you cannot be but really, really excited. So I thank all of you for everything you do. Tony, everybody else, Omar, Parks, thank you very much for that. And so pass it back to Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. You know, we really appreciate it. We need to bring more events like this. I think our park at Ascari is really underutilized. We need to take advantage of it. And projects like this are really what will make our community stand out. Commissioner Ogilvy sponsoring an event that day, a tournament. She and I will be taking punches in the morning from the chess tournament where we're going to compete against some high schoolers that I'm sure are going to beat us. And then later on that evening, we get to see somebody else take punches. So Commissioner?
Schoolers too.
Excuse me?
High school and middle schoolers.
High school and middle school.
We have to try not to lose too bad to the middle schoolers. We have to try.
But anyways, we thank you all for this great, great event. And I'm sure everybody will be out there joining us. So.
Commissioner Ogilvy, any other comments?
No.
Can we take a picture?
Yeah, no, I just, this is a wonderful, another wonderful example of all of us collaborating to make an event like this possible. So it makes me really happy to see when we can, when we can do events like this. So thank you. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Yes, it's ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Jessica.
Item number six is public comment. We do have several speakers sign up for public comment. First, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford. And just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit for public comment. I will be keeping the time.
Who's going to speak?
First, we have Elizabeth Crawford.
Good morning.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning.
We are told in God's Word in Proverbs 27, "Faithful are the wounds of a friend, but the kisses of an enemy are deceitful." What defines a true friend? Again, faithful are the wounds of a friend, but the kisses of an enemy are deceitful. There's a bridge in New Jersey between Jersey City and Carney named for officers Nguyen and Sean Carson. I used to cross it once a week and later learned the tragic story. Robert Nguyen, with a young police officer, Vietnamese background, Sean Carson, a 40-year-old officer. On the night of December 25, 2005, in the thick fog and rain, they dropped off flares on the Carney side of the bridge, shared holiday wishes with other officers there and were en route returning to Jersey City. What they could know was that the center span of the straw bridge had been razed so its tugboat could pass. Their vehicle plunged into the frigid Hackensack River. They died that night, a tragedy. They're blinded by the fog. Our nation and our world has been blinded by a fog that is far more serious than physical fog, a spiritual fog, or to be more accurate, a spiritual darkness. On July 14th has been designated, I'm sorry, July 16th has been designated as International Drag Day. The drag queen movement and the LGBTQ movement has swept our nation, our world. One of their key tactics is the indoctrination of children and teens in our public libraries. Before you quickly label this as hate speech, please listen. This issue is not a distant one in my life. It's affected my family. I lost a cousin to this lifestyle. I lost Dale, who was really not physically my brother, but I regarded him. I dearly loved him. I lost him to this lifestyle. Both died at a very young age. It was very sad. By contrast, about two and a half years ago, I had the privilege of meeting a beautiful young couple, Giancarlo and Amanda, a young couple full of enthusiasm and joy. I liked them instantly and only later learned her story. They serve in Christian ministry with international students in a number of university campuses on the East Coast. When I heard that she was also serving in pro-life sidewalk ministry, I really wanted to hear her story. She could share with young ladies on the sidewalk by the abortion centers in a sympathetic way because she had been there. And there is more to her story that I hadn't known. Recently, I contacted Amanda when I read online that her organization was dividing over LGBTQ issues. Her statement to me was, "We're grieved over this, and especially because that was my life." Her statement to me was, we're grieved over this and especially because that was my lifestyle. But God was merciful to send people into my life who had the courage to tell me the truth, God's truth. I'm thankful for the living testimony of friends such as Giancarlo and Amanda, who now have a precious baby added to their family and were so open to share their story. No matter what may be portrayed, there is not freedom in the lifestyle of pride. Their family is a living testimony that the Lord Jesus was able to transform lives for His glory. As our nation blindly stumbles in the dark fog of deception, the words of the Lord Jesus Christ spoken centuries ago apply as much today as in the day He spoke them, speaking up Himself as the incarnate Son of God who spoke these words. John 8:36, if the Son therefore shall make you free, you shall be free indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, we have Mr. Pedro Serra.
Is he online also? Virtual?
Yeah, he's on the phone.
Mr. Serra?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. I couldn't hear you guys. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry, I haven't been able to go out there because of the weather. My illness is I cannot be in the weather, in the hot weather. So during the summer months, May, June, July and August are the worst for me for the entire year. So that's when I need my help at the most times. It's my illness is seasonal. So at this moment, I'm going to give you an update. The board did not approve my services for the mental health. They was based on improper assessment in the asthma test. And that test was given to me correctly. And they, once that happens, the domino effect takes into effect. Everything, when they did that, everything should have been dropped and that should have been automatically, automatically rescheduled for another asthma test. And they did not took into consideration that. So another thing is that they, they did not, they went ahead and took their advisement on the new diagnostic that was done to me. It was improperly done and she didn't admit it in the hearing. So that, I don't know how it worked. It did not take the domino effect. So I had three doctors letters saying that I'm mentally ill, my illness and everything states there, everything they need. Everybody told me, you got a wrong case. Even you guys were surprised on this issue. So I'm still pending now. Last month, I had a inconvenience. I went to an emergency to pick up my mom. Now they don't want to give me records. They don't want to let me inside the building. I went to the commission, the board meeting and they refused to let me in. So I'm going to need help with you guys so they can let me in for this month's meeting. Because they don't want me to talk to the board members so they can find out what's going on. Or I'm going to need your help so we can find out, so we can tell them what's going on and the issues right now. Well, on that, right now, division, I'm not going to be able to go that much this month. I'm preparing myself for, in August, I think it's the 10th or the 12th, I'm going to be fighting in Vegas. I really got a red shirt, so I'm ready to go for that fight. And hopefully for the, for the late, for the fights for the late, I'll be competing. But two guys already dropped out. They don't want to fight me. So kind of hard finding opponents for me. That's the reason I have to go out there and fight. I wanted to retire in El Paso, but I can't. But the thing is this, but hopefully I'll be fighting on the 20th of this month, you know, Paso, an exhibition. Luis Trevino informed me this weekend, trained. He had never seen me train sparring. I did a little bit of an exhibition show. And he was very surprised on how I looked. And he told me one thing, Pete, you're crazy. I am. I told him, that's my nickname, crazy. So, sir, thank you very much, everybody. And hopefully during the week, I'll be passing by. Mr. Judge, I would like to talk to you about another issue that's going on. If you have a little bit of time for me during the week or something, it's going to take a couple of minutes on this issue. So I'm going to swing by if you'd be available. So thank you, guys, and have a nice day.
Okay, Pedro, you take care of yourself. Take care of yourself, Pedro.
Yeah. Do you have any comments back?
Pardon me?
Okay, okay, sir. Thank you. Okay, I'll see you.
Okay, you take care of Pedro. Thank you.
Okay, and please tell me about.
Our next speaker we have is Mr. Luis Armandares. It will be Mr. Luis Armandares and Talina Armandares together.
Good morning.
The purpose of our visit is because we have a transportation business located in 12724 Beta Rica Avenue. It's one of the streets that leads to the street Saragosa, between Tierra Este and Saragosa. It's a street that had been built for many years, but when it started with the project of the Camellones in all of the city of Saragosa, we closed the street, put some fences in it, and due to that, we don't have access immediately to our company. As I said, it's a transportation company. We're having a lot of difficulties because we're crossing private property, which is the only access we have to reach our business. The street isn't built, it's a street of land, literally. As I said, we're crossing a property, it's private property. There's nothing there, but it was our only access. We've talked before with the personnel of the Comisionado León, they didn't have a solution to this. We also talked with the Public Works, they said we had to talk directly to you. But the truth is, nobody had resolved anything. It's our only request is if they could establish the street or put pavement. We don't have an immediate or direct access. And we're fighting a lot. As I said, the trucks are 18-wheelers and they're loading the arena because they're loaded. So my husband has to go in and haul the loaded trucks. It's a big problem now with the rain. It was tremendous. And even when it's dry, the arena doesn't allow the transport to advance. I don't know if they could help us with that.
I appreciate your time and you came here. I know where the situation is. You could follow up, please, on that with them. Norma, the director of the Public Works, and I support what I can, but she can give us the guidance we need to do this. But I saw how difficult it is to do this.
Inclusive, after two or three months...
Bring the microphone, please.
Inclusive, after two or three weeks, the machines were working, they filled the asphalt, but the street that we're in, it's surrounded. So, no, we don't want asphalt either, but we want to have a better access than we have. People throw garbage. Sometimes we clean it ourselves. And the other day, it's garbage, palms, everything that the people... Because it's not allowed. Like, almost nobody does it there. So we chose to cross over a property that's private property to not have to go through the street.
Well, we appreciate it. Can you give us the details of Norma Palacios? And she's in charge of seeing what we can do. Thank you for your time and coming here.
Our next speaker we have signed up is Mr. Hector Aguilar.
Welcome, Sergio.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Judge.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to thank you for the recent studies, the community input events you were having on the budget and the roads and all. I think that's really important. And I remember having you, Lina, and Judge Sanmaniego, thank you very much. I'm here because we have, similar to the gentleman that just spoke, as you know, the Far East El Paso is growing tremendously. There's a lot of homes and there's a lot of businesses. And each section of land has about 128 parcels. So maybe 100, up to 128 owners. There's a lot of people putting up warehouses and all sorts of businesses in a lot of housing communities. A lot of people are trying to get from Joe Battle to Horizon and some of those areas back and forth. And many of us, and I've talked to a lot of our, I'm in that area, a lot of our neighbors would like more roads. Right now, we have dirt roads, as was mentioned by the couple that spoke. And the roads are terrible, especially when it rains. And if there were more roads built, even if they were small temporary roads with asphalt, two lanes, I know that the future roads will be, many of them are proposed or plan to be six-lane roads because they're major arteries. But right now, to do like two lanes, you know, temporary, like you did an excellent job with Tierra Este. You connected from Vista del Sol to Pelicano, one mile. These are typically, roads are connected by, they're one mile apart. So between, say, Bob Hope, Pelicano, Vista del Sol, Wendemere, they're all about one mile apart between, you know, and then between, and from east to west and from north to south, they're all, imagine like one-mile squares. So many of us are, would like to ask for you to think about, consider working with us to build, you know, small roads to alleviate the traffic and just the terrible roads that right now we use for our businesses. There's a lot of businesses there now. It's grown incredibly quick. And that would be so helpful for us.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Sergio, I want to thank you. Sergio's a breath of fresh air. He doesn't only bring problems, he brings solutions. And he's got, he's always wanting to, and we're not supposed to interact too much with public comment, but just on the, you know, just wanted to thank him for how he approaches things here in our community. Thank you, Sergio.
Our next speaker for public comment is Mr. Juan F. Pinya.
Good morning.
I'm basically just on the same page as him. We work in that area, we live in that area. It's very problematic to come in and out all day, every day. We're offering the same solution as Hector, you know, proposing relief routes. Vista del Sol would be a very good relief route if it would be able to continue where it ends right now. We're willing to, you know, work whatever you, you know, labor, you know, we work around that area. So I own a construction company. I'm all forward to, you know, come up with new ideas, new ways to relieve these problems because it's, you know, 30, 45-minute wait every single time you cross through these areas.
Thank you. We're very proud of another individual. The whole group has been very supportive of finding solutions. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, I'd like to make a public comment with respect to...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, this past weekend, on Saturday, we had our first event on the West Side. I want to thank the El Paso County Housing Authority Backpack and Food Giveaway in conjunction with El Paso Health and El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. The event started at 8 o'clock, and I know Commissioner Hogue had one on the Far East side.
It's coming up.
Oh, it's coming up? That's right. And we're also having another one, I think Senator Cesar Blanc was having another one on the West Side this coming weekend, and yours is coming up as well. And so these are great events for the community. The event started at 8, but there were people lined up as early as 7:15. I want to thank Schneider Electric, who donated money to buy some backpacks. With that money, we were able to buy about, purchase approximately 300 of those. So, and not only that, but they sent us, you know, a lot of volunteers that they were really helped out that day. And again, I want to thank the volunteers from El Pasoans Fighting Hunger to distribute pantry items. And also, thank you to Canuteo Independent School District for making the elementary available and their personnel to host us. And I got to meet individuals who were involved in the justice system that were also providing their community service. So I want to thank them and their supervisors for their help. And of course, the UTEP Prospector was also there covering the event, so we want to thank them and our intern, Dami, for doing that. So it was a great event. We must have had probably up 200 vehicles that come up and we distributed a lot of backpacks. And thankfully, we had enough to go around and even some left over for the next project. So I just wanted to make that. And I want to also thank Commissioner, our colleague Commissioner Stout, who's out in Florida, representing us in the National Association of Counties. He's the Chair of the National Association of Counties Immigration Task, Reform Task Force. And I know in this day and age, it's very important, so I want to thank him for representing us and heading that up. Thank you, Commissioner.
Likewise. Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make additional comment, you know, when we have companies come in, they tend to promise a lot until we get them in here. But just want to thank Schneider Electric because they, from the very beginning, they said they wanted to be involved in the community and I've been seeing more of that. So plus, everybody else that participated in your event, but just very thankful that when companies come to El Paso, they don't just come to make money, but to give back to the community. And that's one of the, they've been a great partner. Thank you.
Item number seven, presentation, 7A. Receive a presentation from Project Arriba and take appropriate action.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, John.
How are you? Every year, we, throughout the budget process, we invite our external partners, namely today, Project Arriba and Crime Stoppers, to provide their presentations around this time of year. And so they are here today to present. There is no action for this item, but only those presentations. So we would like Mr. Roman Ortiz first to come and present for Project Arriba.
Thank you, Roman. And thank you, John. This is, the public really appreciates, they want to know where, you know, who we support and what they're doing. And these are three amazing organizations. So we'll start with you, Roman. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. It's an honor again to be here with you all here this morning. We're going to give, my name is Roman Ortiz and I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of Project Arriba. And I'm here today to give you an overall update of the impact that the county has done in partnership with Project Arriba, really over the last nine years. And we'll get more detail on last year's contract as well. And just to provide you a quick update on what we have done with these public funds. Overall, if you look at this graph, this is from fiscal year 16 to the present fiscal year 24. Over the last nine years, the County of El Paso has been an outstanding partner with Project Arriba. $800,000 investment in Project Arriba. This is broken down by year. Over the last two years, the county has been so faithful in investing in human capital at $150,000 per year. What did our agency benefit or assist the El Paso community in over the last nine years? Well, we've helped create 178 new jobs for rural county participants. On average, when job placed, they earned wages about $52,000 a year. They came into our program making about $7,500 a year. So that's a huge increase in their pay. This results in about $9.2 million in annual payroll to the rural county participants, which equates to about a 12-to-1 back-of-the-envelope return on investment of county funds to what now actually... to what now actual payroll dollars are looking like. I've broken this down into three graphs here. We've, we've, over the last nine years, served 307 rural county participants of that. We've graduated 191 and job placed 178. I will then break down each of those independently. Of the 307 that we have sponsored over the last nine years, 125 have been students who want to go into the Bachelors of Science in Nursing, which is a major need for our local regional healthcare partners. We also have 85 that are, that were interested in nursing, 44 in the licensed vocational nursing, and 53 in all other allied health and other demand occupations. Breaking that down a little bit more, of the 191 that have graduated, we have graduated 94 BSNs from the rural county, 41 registered nurses, and those are the community college degree nurses, 32 licensed vocational nurses, again through our community college partner, and 24 allied health and other. And so what's really important is of that, how many have been job placed? Right now, 178 have been job placed over the last nine years. 89 have been in the Bachelors of Science in Nursing, 37 RNs, 32 LVNs, and 20 allied health as well as other demand occupations. Here's a quick look of our contract expenditures from 10/1/23 as of the close of May. 100% of the, of the funding that comes from the county is used for program expenses. Most of it is direct participant services to include tuition, books, materials and supplies, and then 8% in case management. To date, as of the close of May, we have spent $83,000 of the 150,000. Had your agency not received El Paso County's contribution, what would your agency have not been able to accomplish? Here's just an astounding picture. If you looked over the last nine years, these are 256 rural county citizens that we have been able to help over the last nine years. You can see that in fiscal year 23, because of our partnership through ARPA funding, we had a really big enrollment year that year for the rural county, as well as overall for the entire city limits of, of El Paso. But we've been able to help 256 rural county participants. If we had not received this funding, it would have been much more difficult to be able to help these individuals. How many students did your agency assist and what was your target and what, what did you reach? So if we looked at today's current contract that we're in, the orange represents what we're contractually obligated to do, and the blue is what we have actually done. So we're contractually obligated to serve 60 people, and we are, have served now 94 individuals. We're contractually obligated to graduate 13. We've graduated 21 and job placed 15 of the 13 that we are contractually obligated to do. What does that look like in impact to El Paso? The Hunt Institute for Global Competitiveness has provided this data, based on the data that we have given to them. But for every dollar that's invested of county funds, $28 is being returned back into this community. We have now supported about $31.6 million in total investment over the life of the program, which is how they imply this benefit to cost ratio. The Hunt Institute also provided data on that Project Arriba has now added $893 million in economic income power to El Paso's economy that would not have been there because of the types of jobs that we're getting people in and they're staying in El Paso. With that, I want to thank you for your continued support, and I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you again.
Yes, Commissioner Alguín.
Good morning. I'm just wondering regarding the slide where the participants that were job placed, do we have the figures with how many of those were placed with our county hospital, with UMC?
Yes, ma'am. We provide that now with our monthly reports to the County of El Paso. Just to give you an example for this year, we're contractually obligated to do 45. We've done fantastic. We're at 53 job placements with UMC. Our partnership with the UMC is just continually being, I think, better and better every year. And so we've done very well this time.
Good. That's very good to hear. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner Leon.
Mr. Ortiz, of the 178 job placed, it comes from a pool of how many?
So that was about 300 people over the last nine years.
So over the last nine years, you've placed 178 out of 300 odd number, more or less?
Correct. And so we have right now about 90 currently in school. And then the others, we have a very low amount of people that actually attritioned out because of terminations. A lot of those people are still in the process of getting job placed or we're waiting on data to get, to find out where they have been job placed. But on average, if you look at Project Arriba as a whole, we have about a 93% job placement rate. So for every 100 people that graduate, about 93 get job placed within that fiscal year. And then we have over a 95% stay here in El Paso.
Okay, so that, that holds true for those 178, that percentage?
The, yeah, that percentage right there, because if we looked at kind of the math on it, you know, over the last nine years, Arriba has served 307 rural county participants. And we have, today, job placed 178. So that's a little bit over, that's about almost 60% of that cohort. The balance of those is made up of those that are currently still in school and those that have attritioned out that did not finish school. And we can provide you actual detailed numbers on that if you would like. That would, that would be actually three things. Those that have, that are still currently in school, waiting to, to finish. Those that have finished school, but were waiting on data to see about job placement. And those that attritioned out because of termination, they weren't able to finish school.
And do you have data on when they do leave the program, why they leave?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So we distinguish terminations, that's what we call them. We distinguish them either positively or negatively. A positive termination is someone who, because of a medical condition, has to leave school. Either their spouse goes onto the military, they're attending school on their own because they weren't able to, they weren't, they, not that they weren't able to, but they had needed to leave the city to go elsewhere. So those are more, those are positive things. Negative things, which happen more rarely, would be individuals that stop just attending school, and we can't find them. That happens, I said, very rarely. Someone who may commit fraud or doesn't comply with program requirements.
These are very good numbers, so.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, anyone else? No, just, I guess it's, it's obvious that myself and the Commissioners, job creation is, is really the spark of so many things, right? You've, you've got someone, some of these individuals would probably have made, you know, one-eighth the amount by staying where they were at that point. A lot of them unemployed, a lot of challenges that now become extremely productive. I recall one in particular that, you know, she was struggling, kids, you know, the, the whole situation. And now supervises over, I think maybe over 80 nurses at the UMC. And so this is a kind of, a program that really gives, you know, these individuals an opportunity to be the best version of who they are. And so I thank you. A lot of lives and families have changed because of your program.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you.
We'll take no action for 7A. Item 7B, receive a presentation from Crime Stoppers and take appropriate action.
Good morning again, John Sarah, Director of Budget and Finance. I now invite our partners from Crime Stoppers to present.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, County Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the Board of Crime Stoppers, I want to thank the County of El Paso and all your support that you've given this tremendous group of, of, how can I say this? This group of, of board members that, that do a lot for, for Crime Stoppers and what Crime Stoppers, the, the program does for the city of El Paso. We've been here in El Paso for 45 years, and we continue to grow. And we do great things. I'm proud to say that this year, we have a community hub at Bassett Center that allows more interaction with, with the city of El Paso to do better things, to, to prevent and stop crime here in El Paso and the community. I also want to introduce, and I'm pretty sure you guys know, the, the face of El Paso, I call it, Officer Sombraño, who's been part of Crime Stoppers for, for many years.
Yes, he has.
We got our, our two coordinators for Crime Stoppers. Mr. John Peres. Okay, and then we also got Roger Chides, that they do a lot for Crime Stoppers. And I got here, Mimsi Melda Loia. She is our, does so much for Crime Stoppers, our treasurer, so very important.
Welcome.
I don't know if you would like to say something?
Your school address.
Nope, nope. Okay. We have a presentation, so you can see what we, we, we have for, for where most of our, our stuff goes. This is our mission, you know, we carry out this mission. It's, it's to, to. Our mission is to carry out a community offensive against crime by motivating the public to report information about any criminal activity through our anonymous crime reporting platform, and we're rewarding citizens monetarily for their cooperation. In 2023, Crime Stoppers had a great year. We had 60 arrests, 139 cases cleared. We received 1,460 tips that were assigned. We gave out 22,200 in rewards. We recovered 4,400 in narcotics and property seized 21,269. The impact on crime fighting, the funds, the support of El Paso County has played a significant role in, in, in fighting against crime in these different ways. We, funds help continue to our anonymous tip line operation, which is available to the public 24/7 and our website, at our website, and the P3 Tips application. Okay? We provide a secure method for transmitting crucial information to our law enforcement partners. And this is most of every single type of law enforcement we have here in El Paso, which is from the El Paso Police Department all the way to FBI and Homeland Security. We assist a program in outreach initiatives and social media and, and the community hub promotion. Helps a Crime Stoppers, a school safety program with promotional educational materials throughout the partnering campuses. We go out to the high schools and we give out presentations, materials, so they can also provide any, any tips if they're going through anything in the high school. So keep our school safe. If it wasn't for the county's funding, we probably wouldn't have access to our anonymous tip line. Our laws, law enforcement, the support, the support provided to all the law enforcement agencies may be hindered. Our outreach programs would have limited resources and the ability to effectively engage with the public, raise awareness about our program and, and, and address the criminal activity. We probably would also be affected by the, by our board and our school safety training. Our weekly Crime of the Week feature is beneficial for our community by raising the, the activity to help solve several conflicts and, and crimes. Recently, in 2024, we have these three different scenarios that had, that the tip and calling in on their, on our, on our hotline, we were able to capture these individuals. The April 21st, a Circle K on the east side, a man shoots and was another at an east side Circle K. On March 25th, two men involved in a stabbing at a west side bar that left a man seriously wounded. And in June 23rd, a man is alleged to have threatened two other men who were walking with a gun in Mission Valley. So all these crimes were able to, these individuals were able to be captured thanks to Crime Stoppers. Most Wanted 2023, in collaboration with our law enforcement partners, we compile and distribute a weekly list of the most wanted fugitives in El Paso County. Out of that, 113 arrests, 24 tips, 15 self-surrender, and 73 fieldwork. As I mentioned earlier, we have that community hub, and it's a beautiful facility that we have for our community. Anyone's welcome to go in there, get any information, and very excited about that community hub.
Very nice facility.
Milestones for the 45 years that we've been here in El Paso. We've done 4,794 arrests. We have done 6,568 cases cleared, $1,253,000 in rewards, $4,512,590 in property. We recovered over $48,876,000 in narcotics and, and 10 weapons. So as you can see, these are good numbers that, that Crime Stoppers has helped. And again, we want to thank the Commissioners Court for all your great support that you have given us. On behalf of the Board and, and our support from Crime Stoppers, we thank you for everything.
Well, we're very extremely proud of what you do. Mr. Sombraño, thank you. You've been that face and that sort of gives us confidence that, that you'll figure, you know, something out. But I don't know if you would like to say a few words? I really appreciate that.
Sure. Well, we'd like to thank you, Judge, and all of the Commissioners for all the support through, through the years. As Crime Stoppers has continued 45 years of helping our citizens in this county be able to have an anonymous source to provide information to law enforcement on those concerns and those things that they see in, in their community. We know that safety plays a part in making sure that the community feels that they're able to enjoy their, their, their county, that they're able to enjoy living in their community. And so Crime Stoppers has paid a huge role in being able to help all of law enforcement be able to solve crimes. Because with, with, without those tips, it's, it's like looking for a needle in, in a haystack. Once that tip comes in, it's able to narrow it down. And we, we need to look here, and it saves a lot of, a lot of manpower. It really is a huge assistance to, to law enforcement, which of course ultimately assists all of our citizens here in the county.
Thank you for your, your commitment and your passion to law enforcement. I want to pass it on to who you know is your, your poster advocate, Commissioner Leon.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. As a matter of fact, this Crime Stoppers was the second established Crime Stoppers in the US back a long time ago. I was talking to Sergeant Sombraño earlier, and I, I've always said this, and I think you touched on it, Sergeant, a little bit, that these investigations can go on for weeks, months. And with a call that comes in, it'll shorten that investigation, where it becomes successful, number one. And it saves a lot of staffing hours. It saves a lot of money, both for the county, the city, the federal. the county, the city, the, uh, federal agencies. And, uh, it, uh, one of the other things that I talked to the sergeant about is when I retired back in two thousand and three, I think we had about twelve hundred sworn officers. Uh, and, and my point and what I'm about to say is now it's even more critical that we have an organization like Crime Stoppers working for our community because right now, as I speak, we have about twelve hundred officers. Is that correct, Sergeant?
Yes, sir, just a, a little bit, uh, below, below that.
Can you imagine? Over twenty years, uh, and we've not increased the, the personnel out in the field. So that makes it doubly, uh, important for these calls to come in because what I'd like to see in the future is seeing patrol cars going in and out of the neighborhoods, patrolling. Uh, and now what, what they're forced to do through no fault of their own is go from call to call to call. Uh, so, and I understand now the city is stepping forward with providing, uh, about four academies a year, which will be a tremendous help, and, and I just can't see enough for how important really, uh, Crime Stoppers is. Uh, it really is. And one thing that was not mentioned is even though there's rewards offered, a lot of people don't pick up that reward, they just wanna do the right thing. And hopefully, uh, as I was talking to you earlier Sergeant, that, uh, this is a hard year for us here at the county. Uh, but hopefully we'll be able to invest a little bit more i- in this great organization that really helps in making us one of the safer cities in the country, so thank you for everything you do, and I know that, uh, you know, matter of fact, I, I just toured the east side regional command over on Pebble Hills. What a gem that is, that the city has really gone out of their way to, to build an exceptional regional command. Now, the next question, of course, is the staffing, so, uh, Sergeant, I, I don't know if you wanted to, uh, backfill on what I just said, but, uh, I, I just couldn't be prouder of you all for taking the time uh, to manage this great, uh, organization. And also, one of the things that I've heard there at that location, you have Ambassador Center, that's also open to, uh, organizations like us, and we want to have a meeting there that, uh, we, we can use that facility.
Well, the, uh, community hub is exactly that. It is a hub for the community and organizations to be able to reach out to the community. The, the whole goal that the board had, uh, and of course, uh, there with that partnership with law enforcement, is having a, a facility where we're in the middle of the community and we're able to provide the community or citizens with information on how they can stay safe. So with that being at a shopping center, we thought what a better way, something that is, um, very much, uh, uh, not any type of law enforcement facility, just a, a place in the community where they can go and get information on how to stay safe. And so that is something that, of course, is open to all of our law enforcement partners, our sheriff's office, all of our, uh, constables, uh, and of course, our, uh, any, any other nonprofit organization that has important information on how citizens can keep themselves safe, that is, uh, open to them, of course, at, at, uh, no cost. And we hope to be able to provide more presentations. Our goal, uh, that the board has is to be able to have weekly presentations where we have a schedule where every week people know that they can go there to the, uh, Crime Stoppers Community Hub, and they're gonna have a great presentation on how they can stay safe.
Thank you, and thank you for the additional, uh, insight Commissioner on, you know, as, as we have less law enforcement out there, obviously the community helping now really compensates a little bit, and, and so we thank you for that. We, we've always been very appreciative, but having Commissioner Leon understand from inside out the, the law enforcement component and his excitement about the program really has encouraged us as well. So, thank you all for your presentation. Thank you, Commissioner.
And Sergeant, uh, I noticed my picture's not up there anymore, so, uh, maybe we can do better next year.
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all. Have a wonderful day.
And we will take no action for item seven B.
Okay.
Item seven C, receive a presentation and accept a quarterly report from the El Paso County Housing Authority.
Good morning.
Welcome, Miguel.
Good morning, County Judge Samaniego. Good morning Commissioners, very nice to see you. Thank you for giving us the time to present our report today.
Thank you for being here.
Let me see. The, the large monitor, the small monitor went down, you can, uh, use the, what, large ones as a reference. Oh, okay, and, oh, this is a new one, okay. Well, in, in our report, uh, Judge Samaniego and County Commissioners, we'd like to provide you, um, with an update on our, uh, progress that is realizing our vision and mission at, at EPCHEM. A vision where affordable housing fosters a thriving community, uh, that enhances the quality of life for our residents. And we have been diligently working, uh, on achieving this vision. Uh, just this year, we have successfully, uh, closed on the RAD program, making, marking it a very significant milestone in our journey. However, our work did not stop there. Uh, we are committed in continuous improvement and expansion. We, um, uh, to strengthen our efforts, we have established key subsidiaries that will serve as cornerstones in achieving our goals. These subsidiaries are what we consider strategic pillars that will support the long-term vision and mission for providing affordable housing, improving residents' quality of life, and actualizing homeownership opportunities. So in our report today, we'll expand on those items. We will update you on the progress of RAD, we'll, we'll provide some highlights on milestones and values. Additionally, we will discuss how the subsidiaries are, are pillars, um, are actively paving the path for growth for the Housing Authority. And finally, we'll provide an update on the family services initiatives under the Improving Quality of Life framework. That will showcase a little bit of, of data that we've, uh, collected and summarize recent family, uh, services events. So, uh, we closed on the RAD transaction this March, and HUD is giving us a strict twelve-month, um, um, period for us to complete the renovations at our Fabens Apartments. We did secure five million dollars and a portion of, of that is used to cover expenses related to the renovations. Uh, I'm proud to say that we are on track, uh, with those renovations and we're actually ahead of schedule. Now, on the right side, you'll see the, uh, bullet points that, uh, outline the value and significance of RAD. It is very huge for EPCHEM. Uh, the RAD is a real estate transaction. Uh, this is, um, for us to be approved for RAD, it does transfer the ownership of the properties from HUD over to the Housing Authority. It changes the company's structure of EPCHEM. We now are a parent company and we have subsidiaries that allows us to house, uh, that housing portfolio and future housing portfolios. Um, with that, we were able to now execute a new contract with HUD as the owners. And we've secured new funding that allows us to, um, s- uh, fund long-term maintenance repairs and even replace aging infrastructure. However, I think the, the immense significance and biggest value is that it enables us to harness both private and public funding, allowing us to take on debt and finance projects where before we couldn't. Now, the, the Housing, uh, Housing Authority of our size, RAD represents a financial transformation opportunity. So with the support of our local partners, uh, EPCHEM can take on financial obligations to invest in building new affordable apartments. With each housing project, it increases the Housing Authority's equity, we're able to increase and generate, uh, new cash flow. It enhances our credit worthiness for future loans. And it helps us build the name to secure future competitive funding sources to fulfill our mission in providing affordable housing in our community. Now, in these next slides, we'll show you the renovation projects. Some we have started and some have been, uh, completed. And this first slide, it's our roofs at, uh, Sanchez, they needed to be heavily replaced. So as soon as we closed the RAD in March, we received some, the funding we needed to do the, uh, the roof. As seen here, we started the project on April twenty-ninth and ended it in June third. We will also replace all the furnaces to both properties, a reminder that we have two properties, a total of eighty units, forty in each. And it's, uh, a, uh, they're all, the units are one to four bedroom units. That project started May sixth and ended July eighth. And we're also converting the units to be more energy efficient, you know, we wanna help our residents, uh, pay less in utilities. And, uh, upgrading the units to be energy efficient is very important. We're also wanting to convert the swamp cooling system into refrigerated air, so we started with replacing uh, double pane energy efficient windows. We're then going to replace the doors. This week, we're also going to be renovating the kitchens. We are installing new kitchen cabinets, countertops, sinks, faucets, and ranges, and we anticipate that project to take approximately two months. In addition, uh, we are doing some adjustments, um, because of new ADA compliance. We've always been, always been compliant with ADA, but with new guidelines, HUD is requiring us to make some adjustments, especially for the units that, that are for elderly and disabled. And then we are doing some improvements on the property, uh, particularly, um, uh, providing a new ceiling and coating to the parking lot areas. Now, on this slide, we'll provide a concise overview of EPCHEM's multifamily development project that we're working on currently. Um, this will cover the, uh, housing demographics that we've identified, the implementation strategy that we're following, and then the, the project's vision. Now, we've identified a shortage of affordable units for veterans, the elderly, disabled individuals, uh, young adults like those aging out of foster care, and also other extremely low-income mixed-status families. Once we've identified the location, we'll be able to determine which group we can serve best. However, we can tell you that there is a high demand per our conversation with the VA to try to focus on veteran, um, focused, uh, communities. The implementation, um, box that you see to the right, um, kinda outlines what we're following right now. The, our board members have authorized us to procure new consultants that have been helping us with actively looking for land. So we're looking at both far east and far west of the county. Uh, they've also been able to help us connect with other vital resources like lenders and expert services like architects and engineers. Now, with new resources at our disposal, we foresee securing land and completing the necessary preparations to start new construction projects within the next twelve to twenty-four months, and we'll be back to provide, uh, updates through our quarterly reports. Now, the, the project vision, uh, of this, um, property that we wanna build, you know, we envision this new ca- new location to not only address the housing needs, but for this project to combine, um, uh, to be a, a mixed, uh, type of, um, property that it not, not only includes affordable housing, but also commercial use. Uh, we are providing two case studies that we feel would be beneficial to El Paso. The first one you see there is a housing model in Richmond, Texas, and then another housing model in Clark County, Nevada. What this has done is that it, uh, creates some commercial space area that gives a walking, um, access to the residents there, so they have access to businesses, but it also has been promoting entrepreneur and, uh, endeavors. And so that's been very popular. What we've noticed is that these projects are also mutually beneficial to the municipalities there because it does create job opportunities, but it also increases a municipality's, uh, revenue, which in turn provides additional public services to the residents. Now, in, in this other slide, we introduce, uh, another pillar of our initiative to expand and, and grow our services. Uh, we just, the IRS just approved our five oh one C three application for our new nonprofit this, this first quarter. The nonprofit is called Improving Quality of Life Family Services, and short, in short, we refer to it as EQUAL. Uh, EQUAL is dedicated to securing, uh, funding exclusively for providing, um, services that promote family self-sufficiency services. Our, our clients with that we've, you know, we service on a daily basis, we, we hear them out. They're spread out through Fabens, Torneo, Clint, Sparks, um, Cano Tio, Westway, and the Homestead areas. You know, they tell us the significant service gaps that they're experiencing. So whether the families are housed under EPCHEM or not, EQUAL aims at supporting fam, uh, any family. Uh, what we hope is that these services are provided, uh, through EQUAL will help, um, stabilize them, but also deter the need for applying for government housing. But services under EQUAL will include, uh, employment assistance, education and training programs, access to affordable healthcare, childcare solutions, transportation solutions, financial literacy, and then, uh, referrals for housing. Now, one critical initiative that we're pursuing and obtaining in the next twelve months is, uh, obtaining a HUD counseling designation by HUD and certifying equal staff under, to be HUD certified counselors. Uh, the agencies that are designated, uh, under this program receive direct services and support from HUD, and their aim at providing, um, a lot of support towards helping families achieve homeownership. Um, there are currently two agencies in El Paso that have this HUD designation, and that's Project Bravo and GECU. So, um, acquiring this designation will expand access to, that is, our crucial services and benefit the county residents. And on this next slide, we'll introduce our newest pillar, um, and, and that's, that's supporting EPCHEM's mission and growth. Uh, and this is specifically aimed at helping families achieve homeownership. The entity's name is Creating and Preserving Homeownership Opportunities Group. In short, CFO, I know it's a lot of acronyms. Uh, the entity, um, is, i- i- is, its mission will be to expand funding resources, escrow building assistance, financing and real estate services. One of the things that the Housing Authority right now is able to do after, after RAD is, uh, establish homeownership vouchers. And so with that, uh, we're able to partner with CFO that will expand the collaboratives, like working with lenders, that will accept the voucher to help subsidize the loan. And so with these agreements, it just makes, uh, low-income residents achieve homeownership just one step closer. Now, CFO is meant to advocate for the community seeking homeownership opportu- uh, opportunities. So w- we have seen, um, the interest rates increase, we have seen the cost of construction rise. And so it, it poses a lot of barriers for the families. So what we envision with CFO is that we would build alliances with home builders and other partners to collaborate on projects, to build more affordable homes, uh, energy-efficient homes, but establish, uh, programs that allows, um, those new homeowner, home builds out in the county, um, assist low-income residents become homeowners. So in, in summary here, these are the three pillars that are supporting EPCHEM's growth plan. It's, uh, it, it does align with our vision and mission, but it also aligns with HUD's mission to provide affordable housing and facilitate self-sufficiency and assist, uh, uh, low-income residents transition out of government housing and into their own home. Now, in this slide, uh, it provides an overview of our family services program, uh, which has expanded, uh, under EQUAL. As our staff grows, one significant benefit is that the ability to compile and track data. Using this information has helped us, uh, guide our efforts to be more strategic. So from March to May, we are serving close to ninety families per month on average. The pie chart does, um, indicate that we're getting a substantial portion of our visitors being very, um, uh, single mothers, um, that are needing assistance with, uh, childcare and child assistance, uh, with partners that we've collaborated with. We're doing monthly events uh, that allows us to do like diaper drives, um, education. Um, we, we have applied for a, a grant, uh, that we've obtained for the third year in a row. It's called Parents as Teachers. And this initiative focuses on helping parents that have children four years of age or younger. And they go and they help them with nutrition, training, and school readiness. Additionally, our data indicates that, uh, we get a lot of traffic for families needing assistance that, to apply for SNAP, Medicaid, and Medicare. And those are things that we continue to, to provide service, uh, coming out of the Fabens Office. And in this, uh, next slide, we have, uh, an update on our annual back-to-school event. We're very thrilled that as we have added more staff and more services, that we're able to expand, um, the, the, um, family services, uh, events. So this is our first west side, um, back-to-school event in partnership with Cano Tio Elementary School. Uh, a, a big thank you to El Paso Health Inc. and El Pasuans Fighting Hunger. They've been our, our supporting partner for seven consecutive years. Um, as, uh, this year, Schneider Electric were, were a huge, uh, sponsor. And so we were able to provide, um, a little over two hundred backpacks, um, with school supplies, um, provide food pantries, and also other services. Uh, a big thank you to Commissioner Coronado for supporting this event. We also, um, understand that this is a mutually beneficial event for the county as it supports the promised program that the county, uh, supports and, and the County Commissioner Coronado supports. Um, but we, we always hold our east side location that's coming up on July twenty-seventh. Thank you to Commissioner Holguin for supporting us another year. We'll, we will definitely see you out there. Uh, this is a drive-through, uh, setup, uh, just to give you some data, last year we serviced, serviced over eight hundred families at the Fabens location. Uh, this event will be in partnership with the County Roads Bridges, that's where we will hold it. But, um, I do believe that this will be the last year we will do a drive-through setup. We wanna go back to a walk-in, um, event so that we can hold, um, more free health services like free immunizations for the children and, um, like free immunizations for the children and free physicals. What we tell all of our sponsors and our volunteers is that this is not just a program that helps our housing residents prepare their children to start the new school year. The data that we received is that parents that we serve that are extremely low-income do not have the financial resources to help buy the things that this kid needs to start the school year. So the parents experience a lot of stress, anxiety, and depression. So these type of events help aid those things, and we're hoping that it allows them to, for the parents to focus on other things, like to achieve self-sufficiency. And with that, that ends our report. Oh, one thing that I wanted to mention, Judge, which is a popular request every year, is are you going to be providing free haircuts for us? It's something that we get requested. Right before COVID, the county judge was very generous in providing like over eight stylists to provide free haircuts. It was a huge event in partnership with Fabens, the Fabens High School. So we're hoping that next year we can bring that back, no pressure, but we're, hopefully it will be a great one.
Thank you, Miguel.
Now, I do have one special guest to share a few words on behalf of our board. We have the vice chair of the EPTA Board, Ms. Teri Larby.
Welcome. Thank you for joining, Miguel. Thank you.
You know, it's been my honor to be a part of, excuse me, the board at EPTA. And I want to let you know that I'm from El Paso, I'm second generation here, and the county still has quite a bit of the heart of the city. Now, what I've seen and what the board sees is a very focused, determined way to steward the money correctly. I don't want to play down how hard it was to transition from public housing and the great opportunity we have in front of us with HUD, the ability to build a community rather than just a place to live. And so it's very exciting. They are, they steward things well. You know, HUD wants every i dotted and every t crossed, and they do it along the way. The people that work for EPTA, they don't, they're not at a job, they're at a career. The leadership that's being handed down, he's not a boss, he's a leader, and he's working very closely with the county, and we want you all to feel like you can come in there. They're very transparent, they give us all the things that they need, because they need to do it for HUD as well, and they're serious about what they're doing, and we would love any collaboration to remember that El Paso has a unique culture that we get to protect.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, any comments?
I just want to thank Miguel for everything that EPTA does for the community there in Fabens. They're very much an important part of the community, and events like the one that we're having on the 27th is, the residents of Fabens know that EPTA is there for them, and so I'm very thankful for all of your efforts, and we'll see you on the 27th.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just want to encourage, I think you're very well-positioned now to, but one of the things I really want to encourage is that the development of more residential opportunities throughout the county. One of the visions that we have is that, you know, we love Fabens, we love Sanelli, we love, and we want those communities to be, to stay as a community, that they don't find it necessary because of lack of housing, that they, you know, they start traveling into the city, and then they realize that it's too much transportation money, and then they decide they're going to move into the city, which is fine. But I still think and believe in this idea of communities staying strong, and, you know, I had a small business, and like 15 of them worked in those rural areas, and they worked in Horizon, and I can tell you, they were so happy that they didn't have to move, they could make good money, didn't have to move, but housing was the second. First, it's the job, right? The job creation. Then secondly is, where am I going to live? And they want to stay in these communities, and so whatever you could do, you're well-positioned, you have a lot of things, but we would like, I personally would like to see that there's more effort going to, going beyond what you have now, and have more residential opportunities throughout the county. So I encourage that focus.
The property that we find will define which, you know, group that we will be able to service, and that's the exciting part, because to be able to get entrepreneurship within the residents that are living there, that where you grew up has sometimes very little to do with what values you bring into the society as well. So it is definitely, we want them to be able to live and to sustain and to want to stay.
Also want to thank the commissioners that we've appointed for their hard work. Each one of us have one, and so we're very proud of what they do. It's, you know, I was the interim director there for a small period of time, and I know how important it is to make it thrive, and you're in an excellent opportunity to help so many people, but like I said, I think the residential component is going to be very important as we go further. So thank, thank you all. Thank you for the presentation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Holguin, to accept the quarterly report. The voting is open. Motion carries. Judge, we do have a item for the appointment of, for the housing.
Yes.
We'd like to take up next, item nine B.
Yes, that would be excellent.
Item nine B is approve the appointment of Commissioner Sergio Coronado's appointee, Gabriel Williams, to the El Paso County Housing Authority Board for the unexpired term ending May 14, 2026.
Wow, we get Ramon back. I haven't seen you here in action, so thank you, Ramon.
Judge, commissioners, good morning. Ramon Bracamontes from County Administration. We have Gabriel Williams here, who is Commissioner Coronado's appointee to the El Paso County Housing Authority. He has taken all the mandatory trainings, and we want you to consider his appointment. Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Ramon. Yes, it's really my honor to go ahead and nominate Mr. Gabriel Williams for this position. He has extensive experience in modular construction and affordable housing solutions, and has worked with Project Vida. So we look forward for Mr. Williams adding this experience to our Housing Authority, and I'm sure there's even more projects that will be coming down the road, and thank you for stepping up for this.
I'm excited to serve the community and see how I can help in any way possible.
Well, thank you. We look forward to that, and we're very, very appreciative of board members, so thank you for what you're going to do, and the best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. El Paso's been very welcoming, and I want to do a good job.
Great. Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Leon, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to take the next board appointment item, item nine A. Postpone July 8, 2024. Approve the appointment of Commissioner Sergio Coronado's appointee, Sandra Garcia, to the County of El Paso Risk Pool Board for the unexpired term ending May 17, 2026.
Welcome back. Thank you.
Judge, commissioners, again, Ramon Bracamontes, County Administration. We have for your consideration the appointment of Dr. Sandra Garcia to the El Paso County Risk Pool Board. She's an appointee of Commissioner Coronado, and she too has taken all the mandatory trainings.
Thank you. Judge, commissioners, thank you. You know, I want to welcome back Dr. Sandra Garcia. She's moved back to God's country. That's Canutio. And she's our candidate to join the Risk Pool Board. Her resume is extensive, holding a master's and doctorate in international public health and a major in social demography and minors in behavioral research methods and biostatistics from Harvard School of Public Health. She's also a high school graduate of Loretto Academy. So I want to thank her very much for applying, and we want to welcome her to the El Paso County family again. Thank you for stepping up again for this position, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you so much, all of you, especially Commissioner Coronado, Judge Samadego, and all of the Commissioners Court. I appreciate your service, and it's indeed an honor, having been back six months. It's really true, there's no place like home, and I come from a family with a long history of public service, so it's indeed an honor and a privilege, and I look forward to joining the Risk Pool Board. I think our first meeting is Wednesday, so thank you.
Thank you. The Risk Board is one of those that we don't realize how important it is. It's out there, and, but we thank you and we recognize the importance of that board. So, Dr. Garcia, we thank you so much for being part of this and for being a volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, my humble honor. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Holguin. The voting is open. Item eight from the regular agenda, eight A, receive a presentation regarding a request by the Board of Managers of the El Paso County Hospital District to order a bond election for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, equipment, and/or enlargement of facilities of the El Paso County Hospital District doing business as University Medical Center of El Paso.
Welcome, welcome, team.
Good morning, Thron. Yes, sir.
Or team UMC. Welcome. Thank you for your patience, and we're glad that you're on board.
But Jacob Seenthron, president and CEO of the El Paso County Hospital District. Thank you, commissioners and county judge. We're here to, you know, talk about our assessment or our plan in terms of our ability to meet some of the community needs. We've had community needs assessments performed, and as you know, some, a couple of years ago, we approached the commissioners related to a certificate of obligation bond. It was at that time the view that this should be a general obligation bond to allow the public to vote on this. And so we made a presentation to our Board of Managers last week, who approved us approaching the commissioners, Commissioners Court, to seek approval to place our general obligation bond, to get it approved by the county commissioners on or before August 12th, so that it would be on the November 5th ballot for public vote. In this description of what we're going to do, it identifies some of the needs that we have identified that need to be met in order to meet our community needs. As you know, this is, or you may not know, we are 109 years in existence, and we started as El Paso General Hospital, and in a few months, we'll be hitting our 110th anniversary. This organization has been focused on providing care for those in need as a public hospital and as a safety net, which is basically what it means, is we are that safety net that catches those that are unable to provide care or get care. And so our goal and mission is to provide care for those regardless of their ability to pay. We're also a teaching hospital in partnership not only with Texas Tech School of Medicine, but with UTEP, NMSU, Texas Tech, and others, whether it be magnet schools at the high school level, on up to universities, and we provide training for physicians, for nurses, physical therapists, pharmacists, and the whole gamut, individuals that provide care for our community. UMC, we can provide statistics, and you'll be getting that shortly, but the key for me is always that we provide care one patient at a time. And we have all been through, including myself, as patients of UMC, and have really benefited from the kind of care provided by these heroes. I am not one of them. We have physicians and nurses and people who put hands on patients that are truly the heroes of our community. My job and our job is to be able to provide the tools necessary for our organization and our caregivers to provide the best care possible. This means addressing things that may deal with technology, some of which exist at the other hospitals that we don't have. It also means we will provide access points for individuals that need physicians, that don't have easy access to physicians. So it's access points to provide the medical care that our community needs, whether it be an emergency that requires need to go to Level 1 Trauma Center or a Level 1 Stroke Center, to simply, I need a prescription filled, or I need to see my doctor to see how I'm doing. You'll be looking at things such as geriatric care for those, including myself, that as we get older, need a specialized type of care. This is an obligation and a mission that our hospital district has to our community. So with that, I want to ask John Law, who is our Chief Strategy Officer, to present the needs that we need and how we intend to fill them, and then after that, we'll have a couple of physicians that work with UMC to talk about the needs of ACM as well.
Thank you, Jacob. Welcome, John.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. John Law, Chief Strategy Officer for University Medical Center. Let me just see if we got this going here. As I, as I get started, one of the things our board asked is for us to really start looking at what the community needs are from the standpoint of our mission, and clearly we heal patients, that's a big part of what we do. We serve, and we are the only community hospital system that reinvests 100% of the revenue we make back into the community, and we educate. Jacob talked about our teaching hospital mission. Last year, we had 3,200 students. Those include physicians, nurses, and other ancillary positions that receive clinical training in our, in our locations. And educating also includes health education, and it's the education that our patients need so they can manage their own care. So that's also a key part of our mission. So we did a community needs assessment, and I just want to remind you, we actually shared these next couple of slides at our June 11th Board of Managers meeting, and then we shared some of this content with you on June 24th. We worked with SG2, which is a national consulting firm that works with a number of, I mean, hundreds of healthcare systems around the United States. They did analysis on our community, and this is what they identified as our key gaps. Specialty care and having access to that, the access to primary care, acute bed capacity and across the market and in particular areas of the market. A real gap they identified was insufficient inpatient psychiatric beds, which is a critical issue that we're working on with other community partners. Extended wait times for diagnostics and imaging, a lack of senior-focused clinics, and then the one thing that was, continues to be clear is gaps in cancer care in the El Paso area. As we thought about these gaps, we wanted to remind you of some of the things that we've done over the last several years, and I'll just highlight a couple. As you're aware, we brought on the surgical hospital on George Dieter, which allows us to have 40 extra beds and six operating rooms, and that hospital hit its operations in January of this year. We also had a joint venture with PAM Rehab. Inpatient rehab is really key, especially when you think about being a Level 1 trauma and comprehensive stroke. That type of resource is really valuable for our patients. It also helps us to, to help continue to manage the length of stay for our patients, so the patients stay the right amount of time, not too short a time, but not too long as well. And then I also just want to highlight, we worked with Texas Tech to get the $65 million for the Comprehensive Cancer Center from the state legislature, and then you'll see in progress, we're building out the eighth floor of El Paso Children's Hospital, and that's really a positive story. The Children's Hospital financially has really not only turned a corner, but become really financially strong, and they're actually prepaying on debt in order to help build out that space. So this is, again, this is SG2's work, and it's sort of looking at what is the future of healthcare for our community in one visual. If you start with the orange solid line that's along the bottom, that is the number of discharges that are expected in our market, and it goes out 20 years. And so you can see the number of discharges in our hospitals is actually expected to go down. That's the number of patients is expected to go down. Now, the orange dotted line, you'll notice, is actually the number of hospital days. So while the number of patients is expected to go down, the number of days is expected to go up. And really what that tells us is that we may have, we're going to have fewer patients, but they're going to be sicker, and they're going to have more needs. So there's a need for an additional bed capacity, and it's for patients that are sicker than the general population we see today. The green line is the one that's always shocking, and that's the growth in volume on an outpatient basis. And for a number of reasons, outpatient care is really going to grow tremendously. You can see, even if we look out 10 years, we're expecting 14% growth, which is, which is really an amazing amount of growth in any sector of our healthcare system. The other slide that we shared with you a few weeks ago was just looking at the gaps in our inpatient care, and I know this graph is a little busy, so I'm going to walk through it, but the blue part at the bottom part of the bar graph is the, is the number of critical care patients that UMC has had over the last several quarters. And we essentially have 60 beds in the critical care area, so anytime we're tapping up against that, we are at capacity in critical care. The orange bar is the patient The orange bar is the patients that are in general, that have been admitted to the hospital. They're in a bed, they're not in critical care. And then the light orange is actually patients that are under observation. So they are in a bed, but they haven't been formally admitted. They're being observed up to 24 hours to, to determine if they need to be admitted or whether they can be sent home. So our capacity right now at the hospital is about 290 beds. And you can see that, you know, we're jumping above that blue line. And then as we go forward into 2027 and 2037, based on the growth that I showed you on the previous line, we're expected to go far beyond that blue line. The 40 beds at the surgical hospital will help some, but as we look forward, we expect to surpass that significantly. Just as a note, this morning, we were holding 20 patients in our emergency department. So those are patients that are waiting to go to a bed upstairs. 20 is actually kind of low for us. For example, on June 24th, we were holding 37 patients. And keep in mind, we have about a 45 patient capacity in our emergency department. So when we're, we're at 37, almost all the patients are being held versus getting to the beds they need. Of the 20 that are being held today, seven are waiting for an ICU bed. So these are critical care patients that are down in the emergency department. They need to be up in the ICU, but the ICU is full. And so, you know, we're working to make sure that they get to the right bed as quickly as possible. The other part of this visual I want to share with you is if you look at the bottom, the 1,100 transfer denials over a 12-month period. So first of all, if any patient shows up at our hospital, we take care of them. We serve them in the emergency department. If they need an inpatient bed, we get them where they need to go. These denials are actually transfer requests that came from other hospitals, hospitals in El Paso and outside of El Paso. And due to capacity needs, we were not able to receive those transfers. And so essentially, the other hospital was saying, look, the patient needs a higher level of care. You provide that higher level of care. Can you accept the patient? And so, when we don't accept the patient, like in the case of these transfer denials, the patient either stays where they are and the hospital manages the patient. I'm sure they do absolutely their best to take care of the patient, or the patient ends up leaving town to get care elsewhere. So after assessing our needs, we, we are bringing to you today the, the projects and we, we hope to meet with you again before August 12th, that we would like to be considered for the voters to, to look at on November 5th. There's four buckets of projects and I'll work through each bucket. The first bucket is really looking at the main U M C campus. And as you see, surgical suites, we're really looking to add four operating rooms. Two of those operating rooms will be hybrid ORs. There'll be one hybrid OR on the University Medical Center side and one on the El Paso Children's side. And as I think I've shared with you before, hybrid ORs are a special, specialized kind of operating room that are flexible. They can be used for multiple purposes. They're really important from a training purpose. They're really important for certain types of cases that we aren't able to fully serve today. And they also affect our recruiting. I know Texas Tech was looking at recruiting a vascular surgeon and because we didn't have a hybrid OR, that candidate felt like we weren't a good fit for their, for their future. We're the only health system in El Paso that doesn't have a hybrid OR. So this is a critical piece of what we need. We're looking at two cardiac catheterization labs, an extended observation unit of 25 beds. The intent here is to take the eighth floor where our administrative offices are and put 25 observation beds up on that floor. What that does is we, if you remember on the previous graph, I showed you that little yellow orange or the light orange little layer on the top, those patients can now leave regular beds and go up to observation beds, which is the type of status that they're in, essentially opening up 25 inpatient beds for the patients, ideally the ones that are holding down on the, in the emergency room. We're looking to expand our imaging technology, in particular, looking at three MRIs. Two of the MRIs would go on them, in the main hospital. Right now, we have one MRI in the main hospital. We're looking to replace it and add another. The one MRI we have operates 24/7. And again, it's, it has, there's two implications of not having a second MRI. One is, is that patients can be woken up in the middle of the night to get their MRI, which isn't really ideal. They should be resting for them to get the optimal care. But second of all, in some cases, the patient may have their length of stay delayed simply because they're not getting their images in a timely manner. And so, being able to, and again, we're not looking to rush any patients out of the hospital, but we also don't want them to stay too long. And so this will help us be, you know, kind of hit that, that right point that the patient is staying the right amount of time. The laboratory services, knowing that the medical examiner offices is going to hopefully be relocating to the east side, the facility that's there next to our parking garage, we've allocated funds to move our regional laboratory into that building. Our regional laboratory is now in a undersized space, which is actually part of our parking garage. So if we were able to make that arrangement, they'd be in a right-sized space that would be, that'd be better for them. Parking is another element, which of course, if you've visited the hospital, it's one of the major complaints we get is that we lack parking. And so we will be looking at a parking garage and surface parking. And then lastly, facility infrastructure rehabilitation. There's a number of projects that just kind of keep the bones of the hospital together. So for example, a new roof, Alberta Street, which we own, needs some stormwater work. We need to do an emergency generator. The kitchen also needs to be entirely rebuilt out. So, and there's, there's other projects there, but it's really kind of having the heart of the, of the hospital sort of keep going into the future. The next bucket is our burn center that we've been proposing and the critical care beds. And so we're, we're looking at 23 ICU beds. Again, these beds would be really helpful for those seven patients that are sitting in the emergency department this morning. They could go in those beds and they wouldn't be in the emergency department. But the other piece is that we want to have eight beds in this unit that would be specific for burn patients. You know, I, I know I've shared this with you before. If, if we have an adult that has a severe burn, they're likely going to end up going to Lovick to receive care. If it's a child with a severe burn, they're likely going to Galveston. And what we're hearing, and Dr. Tyra can tell you better than I can, there are days when Lovick's not able to accept our burn patients because they're at capacity. The other piece that's really key when it comes to burn, of the 30 largest cities in the United States, there are only two without a burn center. One is Unit El Paso and the other one is Charlotte, North Carolina. Charlotte has one that's about an hour and a half away. I'm sure they'd love to have one in Charlotte as well, but we're the only two cities without a burn center. The other piece here is the two operating rooms. These are actually rooms that already exist. We just want to re, sort of reactivate them for burn patients. So actually, burn surgeries could be done on the same floor where they would be staying. Those two operating rooms were, actually historically were used for our, our labor and delivery unit. That's where, you know, C-sections and other types of procedures were done, you know, historically. The third bucket is healthcare access points. The, the top priority here is a central geriatric clinic. This clinic would look very similar to our east and west clinics and would be in the main area where the hospital is. A Horizon Health Center would again, look like our east and west clinics, although it would have 35 exam rooms. The central geriatric clinic would have 50, so it would be slightly smaller. We're proposing an ambulatory surgical center on the west side with four operating rooms. When you think about how our services are laid out with a surgical hospital on the east side, you know, obviously all the infrastructure at the main hospital, this would allow us to have surgical capacity on the west side. Also, when you look at Medicare and other funding agencies for healthcare, they're looking for ambulatory surgical centers. And that's something they're looking to have cases done in versus in a hospital setting. So this would give us the flexibility to address that type of requirement. We're proposing an emergency department and an urgent care center on the west side at the west clinic. If this were, be approved, then we would have an emergency department again in west, northeast, central, and east. And so again, part of it is looking at sort of the geographical distribution of our emergency departments. And we would also have an urgent care that we're working on in the Horizon area right now, that's set to open next year. And then we would have an urgent care on the west side. Our hope is to actually have those two next door to each other. And so the patient, you know, will need to do some patient education. If the patient really needs an urgent care center, they can go through that door and reach their urgent care. And obviously, if they need emergency to level care, they can go through that location. And that's, that's a way to kind of balance costs for the patient, but get them to the place of care that they need. The central specialty clinic is a building that Texas Tech currently owns and they're building another specialty clinic on the east side of Reynolds. And so we, we are proposing to purchase that building, which would allow us to have some flexibility with some of the services that are sort of squeezed into different places in the central area. And then the east side rehabilitation services, we have an east side rehab at our west clinic and we don't have one at the east clinic. And so that would allow patients to get care in the same site as where they receive their, their primary and specialty care on the east side. The last bucket is the Comprehensive Cancer Center. And as I mentioned before, Representative Gonzalez really did great work in the legislature to get $65 million for the cancer center. We continue to work with Texas Tech to, to make sure that, that together we have a center that serves the needs of our community. And so we are proposing funds to help with the completion of this project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our CFO, Michael Nunez, and he's going to talk a little bit about the financial impact.
Thank you, John. Welcome, Michael.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Nunez, Hospital District Chief Financial Officer for the El Paso County Hospital District. Where we are looking right now in terms of the anticipated bond project ask is about 397 million. Now, in terms of the timeline that we're looking at, November 1, November of 2024 will be the scheduled general obligation bond election. Second, if that were to be successful, we would be looking at a, at a bond sale in the spring of 2025. Now, we're currently keeping our eyes on, on interest rates right now in terms of everything. There are about four more scheduled Federal Reserve Board meetings in July, September, November, December. And there are now starting to be discussions about, you know, perhaps interest rate declines as the economy continues to slow down and inflation continues to be tamed. Now, a couple of other assumptions we have right here is that now we are about 10 days away from July 25th, when the Central Appraisal District will release their final January 1, 2024 property tax values. We do have estimates in terms of what those numbers are right now, based upon figures provided already by the Central Appraisal District. And then also as to what we expect them to be January 1 of 2025. Now, this, if successful, and this bond sale, the property tax impact will not begin until October 1 of 2025, which is our fiscal 2026 year. Now, in terms of at least currently right now, based upon, now as of January 1, 2023, the average taxable value of an El Paso County property was 191,000. We're estimating that to increase to about up 211,000, 210,000 for January 1, 2024. And again, those numbers are going to be finalized here on, on July 25th. And then July 1 of 2025, an estimate of about $220,000 for an average property taxable value in El Paso County. So with that, the bond is currently planned to be structured in, in two components. There's going to be what we call the, the bricks and mortar, which is going to be amortized over a 30-year period. And then also the equipment over the first 10 years of the, of the bond. So with that, there's going to be different tax rate implications between the first 10 years and then years 11 through 20. Based upon an average property home value of about 220,000, we're estimating as of January 1, 2025, that would be monthly impact of about $7.95 for the first 10 years. Years 11 through 20, that would decrease to about $4.33. So what we're calling the weighted average increase over the 30-year period is about $5.54 in terms of the impact to the, to the taxpayer. The next slide illustrates over the past, past several years in terms of the, in terms of the tax rates for all the various entities here in El Paso County. And I'll emphasize on U M C, which is, which is the third column, you'll see they're going back to 2021. We historically are about eight, eight cents of the, or 8% of the, of the tax dollar. We were at 26.8 cents back in 2021 and currently right now in our fiscal year that we currently are in, it's at 23.6 cents. Now, with that, two of the last, two of these four years that, which are presented, we have adopted the no new revenue tax rate. So again, this is just going back in terms of, as to how the, how the tax rates for, not only for U M C, but as well for the rest of the tax entities as to how those have, those have decreased over the past couple of years, simply because of rising property values. So with that, I'll turn it back over to John as, as he does the closing comments.
So, you know, what we wanted to do is just kind of highlight, well, what, what are the implications if we wait on these projects? We, we know the projects are needed, it's just a matter of when. You know, we, we will continue to be holding patients, which we, we've been in this situation for several years now. Those transfers from other hospitals will, will unfortunately not be able to serve. The burn patients again are going to continue to be challenged by having to leave town. The cancer center, we'll, we'll really have to continue to look for additional funding and regardless, we will be, we trying to get those funds, any funds we can out of the legislature. The hybrid ORs will, will continue to have probably some of those recruitment issues and the ability to do the certain types of cases that are done there. And the MRIs also will affect the patient experience at the main hospital. So, you know, and, and there's more detail here, but, but I'll let you all take a look at that on your own. Just the last thing I will say, and then I'm going to hand it back to Jacob, is just next steps. And so, you know, on July 9th was when the Board of Managers met to adopt the resolution allowing us to come forward to you. We, we came to you immediately here on July 15th. Prior to August 12th is when we would request that you consider adopting an order calling for a bond election. August to November is where we'll be looking to do outreach, assuming that we are on the bond election, and provide updates both to yourselves and to our Board of Managers and then knowing that the election would be on November 5th with early voting. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to Jacob.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John and Michael for your presentation. You know, ultimately what we're looking at is what are the things that our community needs? And if you ask people, they're going to say parking, wait times in the ED or in the clinics or access points. When we built the Joe Battle Clinic, which is now our busiest clinic of our clinic system, it hit its growth, its growth projections, a five-year growth projection in the first year. So some of these things that we're looking at are really critical for us to continue to provide the care our community needs. And you've seen the descriptions and some of the things that we're looking at that addresses areas throughout our region as well as at the main campus. And as I mentioned before, we're not the heroes. The physicians, the nurses, the caregivers, they're the heroes. They're the ones that welcome our, our community members that need the care we provide and they deserve the best care possible. Whether it be a burn center so that we minimize the number of people displaced by having to go out of town during a very difficult situation, to be able to perform vascular and heart valve cases at our, at our facility that our community needs. Or whether it be just providing additional critical care beds or additional regular beds so that we're not holding patients in the ED that are waiting on a bed. And, you know, the thing about the equipment, things like an MRI, we should not be waking someone up to be able to get an MRI done because it's busy doing other procedures during the day. You all have always been our greatest support. Without you, we can't proceed beyond this. I remember when we were looking at the CO bond, we were talking about, you know, what was it? I think John quoted someone saying, "I stand under the shade of a tree" that somebody planted many years ago. The things we do today are planting seeds for the future. Some of these will benefit our, our community fairly quickly and some will build on for the future. So you have always helped us. When I look at the photos of, you know, El Paso General Hospital when it was 109 years ago, to what I look at today, in our partnership with Texas Tech, our physicians, our private physicians, the great quality of staff we have, I'm really proud of where we have come. But it wouldn't have happened without the support of our Commissioners and our Judge. And so, this was a presentation, hopefully that further discussions are needed, that we will get your support to post the general obligation bond on the November 5th election and get the approval on or before August 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to have any of the doctors speak?
Yes, I think they were listening. Yes, I think they were listed for public speaking.
Yes, we have Dr. Ismael Rodriguez.
He's our geriatrician. He looks very young to be a geriatrician.
Yes.
Every time he sees me, he wants me to sign up as a patient with him. So.
Keep working on it, doctor.
You can call for an appointment later. Thank you for having me, Judge Sanmaniego and Commissioners. My name is Dr. Ismael Rodriguez. And as Jacob mentioned, I'm, I'm an internal, UMC internal medicine doctor, and I specialize in providing geriatric care, geriatric board certified. And I've been at the UMC family for about 11 years now. Seven years ago, I was asked and given the task of creating a geriatric clinic. And we had clinics at the time that were very successful in, in providing primary care. And about seven years ago, we started branching out and providing specialized care in our clinics. And we started that project with the geriatric clinic. And I was very proud to have created the clinic and, and be very successful from, from day one. It was a very basic clinic right from the beginning. For those of you who might not know, a geriatric medicine doctor is a doctor that specializes in care for people that are 65 and over. And we also specialize in the conditions that are very common in that age group. We also, sorry about that, let me get my nose up and running. So in the time that I've been at UMC, we started the clinic by myself, pretty much. And with the support of the hospital's team, we started growing that clinic to the point that we saw, we, we need more help, right? And there are two big issues with geriatric medicine. One of is, and the two most important really, is the, the shortage of specialized doctors. In the United States, there's an average of 3.6 geriatric doctors per 10,000 people. In El Paso, back of the envelope calculations, by knowing my colleagues, right, we have about 1.5. It's very, very low. So we need a lot more, a lot more support in that, in that area. And as the presentation mentioned, we, we're experiencing a big population shift, where by 2030, 100% of the baby boomer generation will be 65 and over. And that chunk of population, if you will, will comprise about 20% of the total population. So we can expect the next 20, 30 years to, to be very busy for us, to put a lot of strain on the healthcare system. Because we know that age group is the one that requires the most amount of care, right? So we at UMC, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve in creating an access, you know, more access to patient care. I only provide services at the east side clinic. Two years ago, we were able to hire a second local geriatrician that currently offers services on the west side clinic, Dr. Aguita. We're very proud of that. And in about two months, we were able to hire a local doctor that was out of El Paso, and we're bringing him back home. And he'll be providing services at the Isleta and Favens community, right? It's only, you know, a little bit, and contributing to that 1.5 that we currently have. And, and we, of course, need a lot more. We are, through the last seven years, we've created community partners, UTA being a very important one. They were looking to, to, to see how they can train certain of their schools in geriatrics. And we collaborated with them in creating certificates of geriatrics for, so now students from the School of Nursing, Social Work, Physical Therapy, and Occupational Therapy, if they desire to do so, they can get a certificate in geriatrics, and they're welcome to our clinics and participate in evaluating patients. And that's been very, a very good experience. We also are working with Texas Tech. We host the geriatric rotation at the UMC clinics on the east and the west side for the internal medicine residents. We collaborate with local partners in nursing homes and palliative care medicine to be able to extend those services that we currently do not provide. And, and as we've grown, we not only improved the access points, but the quality of care. And I think we're in a very fortunate position. And we, we're, I'm sharing with you, we're, we're recently submitted a certificate of recognition to be the, the area's only age-friendly healthcare system. And we're in the process of getting evaluated. Not only does that tell you that we're, we have a big compromise with our patients, but we're not only providing care, we're, we're providing the best care possible, second to none, okay? And hopefully with your help, you saw the presentation, we're looking to create a specialized, centralized clinic for geriatric care. What does that mean? Think about it as a one-stop shop, right? Where, where, where the, where the patient can go and get the, seen by their doctor, they can go pick up their medications at the same clinic. They can meet their community needs by talking to their social worker, getting evaluated by physical therapy, among many other services, all done under the same roof. And we, you know, we, we thank you for, for your attention. We'd like to welcome you to any of our clinics. I've seen a couple of you at the clinics already. If you haven't, we'd be happy to give you a tour and, and talk to you more in detail about what we're doing and what we need. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy.
More than anything, thank you for, for what you do and the creativity of everything that you discussed. And that's why this is so important, the community sometimes, you know, we get a little bit more of a preview and understanding, but our community doesn't understand the whole impact. So, Doctor, thank you for personally coming down.
Thank you for your time and attention and your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. If you have an extra card, I think Judge Sanmaniego would like a card. But I will say, credit is due also, who's not here, I see him on the screen, is Commissioner Stout. He has been the champion for geriatric care along with Davy Johnson. We had a meeting with her last week, an amazing woman in her 90s who is an advocate, a champion for providing this level of care. She traveled with us to Houston along with the commissioner and others, and we learned a lot about this. And so our goal is to not only be an age-friendly geriatric clinic, but also to have a geriatric Level 1 ED. And then now, in trauma, they're also talking about geriatric trauma. So certainly since I'm in that baby boomer area, I'm certainly interested in making sure that we do this right. Now, next we'll have Dr. Tyrock. He's our chief of surgery, chief of trauma. Truly a person that people will approach and say, "You saved my life." And half the time, I don't think he realizes the impact he's made on those individuals and their futures. And so he is someone I truly respect, and has actually done work on me. So don't blame him for how I look. This is the way it is. But he is an amazing physician and an amazing professor who teaches many of our young surgeons to be our next line of defense.
We fully agree on that. Thank you. Quite an honor to have you, Doctor.
Well, good morning. He's being too kind. First of all, it's a team effort always in surgery or medicine. It's not just one person. It's the nurses, it's the other doctors, it's all the staff at the hospital. So I'm Alan Tyrock. I think he's now the chair of surgery. And I want to say good morning to all of you, including Mr. Stout down there in Florida, I think. So I, I came here in 1997, right out of fellowship. Next month, I'll be here 27 years. I guess nobody else wanted me, that's why I stayed here. But that's not the real reason. The reason is, I saw something over the horizon. I, I saw this campus, Alberta campus, so much potential. Plus, if any place needed doctors and more nurses, it's the El Paso region. Y'all know that. And I see all the evolution. I saw Tex, I'm sorry, Thomason Hospital, I like to call it still Thomason sometimes, it just feels good, become University Medical Center, I think in 2008 or so. I saw El Paso, Texas Tech El Paso, grow from a regional campus in the Lubbock system to our own medical school around 2008 or 2009, and then become a separate Health Sciences Center in the Texas Tech system in 2014. We just had our 10-year anniversary. So really, a lot of growth happening. I really came here to set up the trauma program. I had no desire to be a chair of surgery. I did that because the prior chair, Dr. Solstein, asked me to be the interim, and then nobody else wanted it, so I, I took the job. But I saw us move from 1,200 trauma admissions in 1997, and a Level 2 trauma center in 1998 to a Level 1 trauma center in 2001. We are now averaging over 3,900 trauma admissions per year for the last several years. Of that, about 650 to 700 have something we know as an injury severity score greater than 15, which means a severely injured trauma patient. You have to have at least 240 to make yourself a Level 1 trauma center. We've easily exceeded that since 2002, actually 2001. We cover a population of 1.25 million individuals in far west Texas and southern New Mexico. That's 44,000 square miles. People depend on us. 42 to 44% of our trauma population that we admit come to us in transfer. I'm not talking about just New Mexico or outside of El Paso County, but even the city of El Paso, from the other hospitals. That's about 1,600 patients a year that come to UMC because the other places do not have the specialty care that we have. That's what a Level 1 does for you. Going outside of being the trauma center, I always tell my surgical candidates I interview, my surgical catchment area for specialty surgical care is 1.25 million people. Obviously, some are kids, but we're recruiting pediatric surgery also. That's a large population because these other hospitals do not have the specialty care. In the last six weeks, I've interviewed 11 candidates. Six different surgical specialties come to El Paso because we, we need that here. The population deserves that. But I can be honest, to be honest with you, it's hard to look them in the eye and tell them, because that's one of the things surgeons will always ask, "Do you have OR availability? What's your turnover time?" And I, I have to be honest with them. I go, "It's not that good. We're a county hospital, county hospitals, we deal with crisis." I, I talked to one of my counterparts at Ben Taub. They had 41 patients last week sitting, waiting for beds in their hospital. And they had the same problem, but they're intercity county hospital, Harris County. But we're, we're facing that. I think John, or John mentioned that there was 20-some patients waiting. I just got an update, that's true. We're actually down to 18. It was 25 at 7:00 AM, it fluctuates. But we had 10 patients in the ED waiting for ICU beds. And many of those are on the ventilator. We also have, which he didn't mention, five patients in the recovery room that are ICU status because we had no place to put them on the second floor, the third floor. So we're putting ICU patients all over the hospital. I was on call this weekend, we do 12-hour shifts on weekends, 7:00 A to 7:00 P. I rounded on 37 ICU patients in the surgical ICU on Saturday. We moved 12 of them out, but on Sunday, when I came back after the night shift, I had 38 patients in the ICU because 12 moved out, but 13 moved in. That's the way we just keep moving patients. We talk about more outpatient care, but more higher acuity patients and length of state. That's because hospitals see sicker patients. So the volume is just so great. There was mention about a hybrid OR. Yes, it's great for training, but it's even better for patient care. I'm going to give you two examples just from last week. I'm trying to not violate HIPAA or anything, but we had one patient, terrible liver trauma. The liver was shattered, there were some other injuries too, but we'll focus on the liver. The surgeon immediately took the patient to the OR, got multiple units of blood. And what did they have to do right after the surgery? They went down the hallway to our cardiac cath lab for embolization, because there were some parts of the liver that are internal to the liver, the organ, that they could not reach without causing more trouble. They had to embolize that. That's what a cath lab had to do for us. That's what a hybrid operating room does. You do your surgical part, then you get somebody else to do the endovascular part, either a neurosurgeon, a vascular surgeon, cardiothoracic surgeon, or cardiologist. Another example, non-trauma patient came in. I was on call. I called the vascular surgeon because we have a patient with a ruptured abdominal aortic aneurysms, the big, the artery that takes blood from the heart, it's about two thirds the size of a water hose. It was leaking. She was in major shock. Rushed her to the cath lab, because nowadays they do this endovascular, where they put a stent in. Well, they were in the cath lab, they did the stenting, but then she ruptured more. So then they had to convert to an open procedure in the cath lab, which is not where you want to do the surgery, but that's what we have to do sometimes. I've actually operated in the cath lab myself, so have the other surgeons. A hybrid OR would take care of that. Dr. Adidian is our chief of vascular surgery. He's the one that's recruiting for some more vascular surgeons because we do have that need here. It's very underserved also. He went to their job fair at their major vascular society. Every person he talked to, the young graduates said, "You don't have a hybrid OR?" He says, "No, but we're trying to get one." And they said, "Well, you know, that's pretty standard now." We actually interviewed a candidate about two months ago, and he says, "I thought UMC was the flagship hospital. I can't believe you don't have a hybrid." The two private hospital entities in the city got hybrids in 2014, 10 years ago. William Beaumont Army Medical Center got their hybrid OR in 2020, I believe. And we're still struggling for that. And so it's a necessity. Burn care, you saw me step out a few minutes ago. There's a patient with a major burn in another hospital in El Paso that they want to ship to us. And we said, "The patient exceeds our capability." It's a 35% burn, major burn. Usually if it's more than 20, we try to ship those out. And really, she should be shipping out 20 percenters, but we try to keep those for the sake of the patients. And the patient's refusing to go to Lubbock right now. But we're going to see what we can do. They're trying to talk to the patient to keep them, or to transfer from here to that place, but UMC should not take that patient. That being said, we're seeing about 90 severely burned patients a year on average for the last four years. We're keeping 75% of them. So three out of four that actually meet American Burn Association criteria go to a burn center, we're keeping because Lubbock is 345 miles away. They are over capacity. And quite often, in the early spring or the winter time, we can't fly from here to there because the, the weather is, is bad in the Lubbock area. So it's, it's not the right thing for the patients to ship them out. John mentioned that, but I mean, look at the top 30 cities in the country based on population. El Paso's ranked 22nd, 23 if you use Washington DC as a city. There's only two cities that does not have a burn center. El Paso has a dubious distinction not having one in Charlotte, North Carolina. But Charlotte, North Carolina has one 80 miles away, and another one that's 140 miles away. So they have that in their region. But El Paso's an island to itself in burn care. So we really need to work on the burn program, I think. We all think that. So I'm going to wrap it up. First of all, thank you again for the time. UMC is a beacon to the region. It really is. I really think we are on the cusp of moving to the next level. I've seen the evolution, but we really, really need to get the infrastructure, the hybrid OR, the burn program, more ICU beds, more floor beds, the growth around the city, help with the cancer center. That's a lot of the surgeons I'm interviewing are surgical specialists, oncologic specialists. So please, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Doctor, before you sit down.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, Judge.
No, no.
Thank you. Doctor, and, and you said at first, Jacob, that you've saved a lot of lives. And I'm a living example of that back in 2009. And I was flowing in.
That long ago, wow.
That long ago, yeah. I was flowing in from southern New Mexico, but had I gone anywhere else, you'd be looking at another commissioner right now, lesser commissioner. But, but I've got to tell you that when I watch the news and I see all these trauma patients, whether it be trauma, burn, a severe illness that, that are going to UMC, I think to myself, you know, I, I have family members. If anything happens, I want the facilities to be available to take those patients in. And that's what we're fighting for. If you remember back in 2013, when we were talking about the clinics, we had so much opposition to that. I had so many calls. We had this courtroom full of people the day of the vote. But we did it. And one of the things that I heard was that you'll never fill up that east side clinic. And I, I think it was within a couple of weeks, it was full. So there is a need. We're severely underserved here in El Paso. And, and I really do appreciate what you've done, number one, for me.
Thank you. It was a team effort again.
You know, the right team was available. And I, you know, that's critical, it sounds a little corny, but it is critical for patients coming in. If the right team's not available, or the right instrumentations are not available, they're not going to make it. That's the bottom line. So.
This is not a luxury.
No.
This is a necessity.
It is a need. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Doctor, for great insights. Thank you.
And I will tell you that Dr. Tyrock's very humble, but it is his team that is always here 24/7, year-round. They were here when we had the August 13 shooting. The, our physicians are there when we have the COVID challenges. They are there every day, fully staffed. We have grown in terms of the number of specialists we provide. We have specialists that are not available anywhere else in the city. And we're proud of the things that we have done for, for our community.
of the things that we have done for our community. But as you can see, they need the tools, the instruments, the space to work in order to continue that work. So, you know, we leave it in your hands, and hopefully, on or before August twelfth, we'll get your approval to be able to proceed with placing the G O bond on the November fifth ballot.
Thank you, Jacob. I just want to comment, you learn a lot from interviews. And I got interviewed yesterday, and a couple of times they've asked me that if we're in conflict, since we're going out to bond and U M C's going out to bond, and obviously, I say, no, it's just, it's a different dimension. You're very well-aligned with what we want. In our bond, it's, what is it? Quality of life, accessibility, and you're enhancing that. You're enhancing that, and you mentioned it, even from transportation to education to health care, all of these things, the, you know, trying to get our people to stay here instead of going somewhere. We know the impact that it has on families having to leave El Paso. And so we're, you know, we're very well-aligned, and like I said, it was very important for me to be able to express that there is not a conflict or that we're fighting each other to see who gets the bond. The next question was, wouldn't that add much more money to the bond? And I said, you know, it's not about adding money. It's about what is it that the community needs? And sometimes we take long to go out to bond. We were hesitant, we take long, and then that builds up. And I said, if we don't do it now, you're going to see bigger, bigger bonds coming your way because we're having to address the increase, the inflation, all of these things that have to take place. So on a personal level, I can't speak for the commissioners, I think we're tremendously well-aligned in that whatever, the two bonds coming together really is a synergism that we need in this community at this point in time. So I want to thank you for the presentation. Thank your team, doctors, for being able to take your time. I keep, I know how doctors tend to be, and you're probably saying, I could be over there helping patients, but thank you for being here today and allowing the community to understand. This is all about education. I think most are some misconceptions. We saw it in the certificate of obligation. I was just amazed at the misconceptions, the misinformation that took place. And our goal is that we don't have that, that the community truly, truly understands what they're going to vote for and the impact it's going to have. And the last thing I can tell you, one of the things I've learned more than anything, the most expensive cost of health care is delayed treatment. It is the most expensive. It's going in with a couple of issues, not being able to be assisted, you walking away, deciding you're not going to get help because it took too much time, you were not seeing it in a timely manner. A year later, that's, could be ten, fifteen times the cost to the community and to our public and to the money that we use. So this delayed care is really what you're looking at. I think the two things are accessibility and then the delayed care, that if we don't, if we delay treatment, it's extremely, extremely expensive to our community. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And then I've got Commissioner Ogilvy.
Good morning, Jacob. I just had a couple of quick questions for Michael. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning.
So if the voters approve the three hundred and ninety-seven million, what is the total debt service going to be?
The total, okay, the total debt service, if I have that. Let me get that for you in terms of, because I don't want to give a misinformation, so let me go with the total debt service would be on this specific bond.
Okay. And then just one last question, if you have this, or if not, you can get it to me as well. What is the current outstanding debt for the hospital district?
The current outstanding debt for principal only is about three hundred, three hundred and ten million or so, but I can get, I can get the final amounts. We are going to have a scheduled principal payment on our existing debt August fifteenth, so I can provide you the current balance, and then after the August fifteenth, principal payment as to what it would be after that. So I can get those.
And the interest amount? You don't know that amount?
The interest, well, I can get those for you. Principal, interest for our current existing debt we have, then on top of this, and then what the total would be.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coronado, please.
Thank you, Judge. You know, my takeaway from this presentation is that not only do we need this, but this is really, what this proposal is, is just to keep up with the current needs. You know, they're not asking for anything beyond what we are currently needing that is really critical to our community. I mean, these are, this is a state mandated service for us to provide indigent health care to the community. And unfortunately, the state doesn't help us as much as they should, and they could very easily expand Medicaid to our community. A lot of other conservative states have done it and receive, we're turning away billions of dollars every year. And so, you know, our community, we are not third-rate from the rest of the state of Texas. Our community deserves this. The other takeaway I have is that from these projects that are proposed, it's an equity issue, really, that all the outlined areas in the areas within our community need to have some of the same access to these services that other places do. And so we have a really extensive county that, you know, a lot of miles in between Anthony and way past Fabens. We're talking about, you know, Torneo and afterwards. So this is, to me, is just, it's a necessity, and it's about equity. It's about treating our community right with the services they need. We don't want them to go, have to leave town. Some of them just can't do that. And, you know, for example, the burn, as the doctor pointed out, you know, sometimes we can't treat these, and we force our individuals, our community members with these, who have dire need for these services, that we send them with, that we just can't handle, is to let them on their own. That is unacceptable to me. It is totally unacceptable. And, you know, and I get it, our community is, you know, concerned about taxes, but, you know, this is, this is dire services we're required to provide. And it's not just about, you know, it's critical services that we need. These are not something that's, you know, luxury items. This is actual necessity, essential services that we should be providing to our community members. The other takeaway I have is that, yes, you know, we have issues with taxes, but, you know, we're not, we're not a property poor. Poor is a wrong term. We are property economically disadvantaged, okay? There's a difference. And we need to do as much for our community as we can, and we need to let them have that decision, that power to decide, do you need these services? Do you want these services that we desperately need? And I think the community is going to step forward and say, absolutely. Because this isn't just about, it is not just quality of life, okay? This is personal to a lot of people in our community, very personal. I experienced that many years ago with my own daughter, that we didn't have essential services, and we had to go to Fort Worth for a children's hospital. Thankfully, we have one now. And so I, you know, I'm just, you know, this isn't, I wish we could do more, but I understand we need to be conservative about what we spend on, but these are really critical, essential needs. And I think this is just, I wish we could do more. And it's, you know, and I agree with you, Judge, this is not something that is in disalignment because we're going out. These are just needs, and we need to let the community have that power to decide these issues. And I'm glad that we're looking into doing this because this is really great services that we need. You know, I was just, about several weeks ago, I was in the, attended a conference in South Texas, the South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Conference, and I was the only individual there present from a county that has a public, our hospital district. And, you know, talking about not just the flagship, but talk about the way we're known for our critical, for our care, for indigent care, is the presenter stated to me, wow, wow, you are, you're, you know, your hospital is famous, famous for providing great care. So we're known around the state, even despite being economically property disadvantaged. We provide that great care. People want to go to our hospital for treatment, and it is very sad that we can't provide some of these really needed services. So I think, you know, it's a great proposition that's being made, and, you know, and I'm hoping that down the road that the court really fully supports this.
Can I just add something? For Commissioner Coronado, if I can add just something to what you just said, I agree a hundred percent, but, you know, will this court stand in the way of the possibility, well, it's not really a possibility, it's a for-sure thing, that you all will save more lives with this? I mean, can you put a price on one life saved as you all move forward with this? So I just wanted to add that because it's so critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your submissions. Well, thank you. Thank all of you for your time, for being here, and, you know, we wish you the best, and we'll continue educating our community to make sure that they understand, you know, the impact it'll have, the positive impact it'll have on our community, and also in alignment with what we're trying to accomplish. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, can we do the next item really, really quickly? We have some folks who've been waiting to speak.
Sure.
It shouldn't take very long at all.
Sure.
Okay, item ten A from Commissioner's Court. Discussing take appropriate action to use the El Paso County Courthouse for a youth chess tournament to take place July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Further, take appropriate action to waive parking and security expenses for the event.
So this is a joint project between my office and Commissioner Stout. Commissioner Stout, do you want me to just explain a little bit about the tournament, and then you'll jump in? Okay. So this is something new that we're trying here at the courthouse in an effort to have some of our youth be exposed, particularly to attorneys who are in public service and work here at the county courthouse. As some of you may know, we have a pretty strong youth chess community here in El Paso, and chess tournaments are held not every single weekend, but several times a month at least, just throughout the city and the county. I, the gentleman who is here, I've met him through that community of chess players, as my daughter is a chess player. And we had this idea to have students come to the courthouse, be introduced to our beautiful county courthouse, have a chess tournament here, and then towards the end of the chess tournament, the winners throughout the day will play some of our government attorneys. So I've invited the county attorney's office, the district attorney's office, and of course, the public defenders to try to come and play some of our youth chess players. Commissioner Coronado also volunteered, so he will be playing that day. So we just feel that this is a really great opportunity to expose some of our students to the wonderful work that's done here at the courthouse. Many of them have probably never been to the courthouse, don't really know what a courthouse is or what happens here in the courthouse. And so we think that this is a really great way to expose them to that. So what we're asking for today is for the use of the courthouse, and we've already met with our facilities director to discuss that, and also to waive some of the parking fees for some of the parents. Not every single child's parent stays. Some children get dropped off. Some, I'm sure, are going to be walking here to the courthouse because the Segundo Barrio has a very active chess club. But there will be, I imagine, some cars, so we're looking at maybe about thirty cars that we might need to waive the parking fee for at five dollars a car that comes out to about a hundred and fifty dollars. Norma has some estimates for the parking garage attendant would be about another two hundred and eight dollars that would be due to them. We do have also for our security for that day, since it is a Saturday, it would be about sixteen hundred dollars for overtime for some of our deputies, which, and I think, Norma, I'm not sure if you were able to find out if that could come from salary savings respond yet, Commissioner. We believe that it can come from salary savings, but that's something that we're still following up on. So we would have three deputies here, even though, of course, we don't expect to have any issues at the courthouse, but for everyone's safety, we would have three deputies here. So we have Mr. Placencia, who is here to give public comment. Commissioner Stout, I'm not sure if there's anything that I missed that you want to touch on.
No, I just wanted to, you know, real quickly, just thank the, thank the organizers. Thank you, Commissioner Ogilvy, particularly. Want to thank also our county attorney, Christina Sanchez, who came in with a lot of support. Just a great, great partnership. Thanks to the staff in Commissioner Ogilvy's office as well, Gabriela, Javier, and Kayla, and Paulina in my office. You know, I think that chess is really, really fun. I probably would get my pants beat off by any of those kids, but I think it's just a great, great opportunity to be a part of this, so thank you.
Thank you both. Great event. Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, hello, everybody. My name is Jose Placencia.
Welcome, Jose.
Thank you. And I'm also Texas Chess Association representative for District Four, which is a large area all the way from El Paso, all the way to east, going towards Midland, and all the way south to Presidio. I'm also the coach with, along with my colleague, Karina, where the chess coaches at Segundo Barrio Chess Club, which is also now a spring of the Segundo Barrio Football Club as well. We just wanted to talk about some of the pinpoints why chess is very important for our youth. Chess is very important for our youth because it's an exercise for their brain. You know, a lot of, a lot of the things that chess teaches is patience, critical thinking, sportsmanship, etiquette, and of course, self-esteem. One of the things that we noticed is that our kids generally do very well when they go outside of the city and compete, such as Miss Eliana Ogilvy's daughter. But the fact is that there's not a lot of Hispanic kids participating in some of these tournaments, and that's one thing that chess helps them and alleviates this self-esteem issue. And sometimes it might be from coming up from our Hispanic youth, that sometimes we think that some of these other kids, you know, are from Korea, from India, from Russia, that they might be a little bit smarter than us. But I think this breaks the barrier and makes, makes everybody, not just in the Hispanic community, but throughout the city, gives them self-pride and also achieving that success. So this is something that chess helps alleviate, and I've also seen a lot of, a lot, and I would like to present maybe next time, a lot of data and graphs, and just how much chess helps the kids in the start test as well. We have seen that as a teacher myself, I have seen the growth in some of our chess students that have been in chess, how much greater they do in the start test as well. Another thing too is that there's a large area in the South Texas, in the Brownsville, McAllen, Edinburgh area, that also has kind of the same demographics as El Paso, that being a Hispanic community, being on the border as well, and having a low income. And we have seen, we have seen those counties in the South Texas explode it, and by what that means, their grades have gone up. And not only that, but we also have the highest participation in the whole United States from that area in state tournaments, and also the strongest chess players are coming from South Texas. So that's what we kind of want to replicate, and not only that, but show you some data and graphs, as long as with, along with the school board, and tell them how chess is not just, you know, some, some type of game, but it also shows sportsmanship, critical thinking as well. And that's, that's what we're trying to achieve here by doing this. And I want to thank everybody for their undivided attention here, Commissioner Eliana Ogilvy, David Stout, and everybody else here for allowing us to present here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Well, you're a perfect example, you're a perfect example of someone that understood chess and how it helps you on a personal level. And they're not any smarter. What it is, is they have more exposure to these events because you can do all the chess that you want to on an individual level, but it's those events that really give you that sense of competition, that sense of wanting to get better at what you do. It compares you to others, and then that's your benchmark. So I thank both commissioners. I think a lot of things that I think are amazing, one of them is the exposure here to the courthouse. We're getting better and better, I've been seeing more, I've been asking more groups. So we're going to have a group coming in from Michigan this week as well, coming into our courthouse, and they get amazed because this is something that's illusionary, like, what is that courthouse?
Yes.
They get to find out what it is. So I thank you for that. Great, great activity, great event. Let us know how we could support it, but you've got two commissioners that are going to be very excited about this, and then you've to be very excited about this, and then you've got one participating.
Awesome.
I participate, but the pandemic, I'm just kidding. We always blame everything on the pandemic, so I thought I'd take that advantage of, but it's going to be exciting. But I love the fact that the highlighting of our talent and also this community, talk about eradicating narratives about perceptions and stereotypes, is by being involved, winning these tournaments, and it changes people's mind about who are, you know, our youth here and on the border community. So, thank you, Jose.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch up on something. My colleague had to leave right now to an emergency, but he wanted to tell you that one of his fondest memories was having this lawyer's chess tournament. So from his childhood, he wanted to tell you that he remembers all these memories from growing up and having these lawyer's chess tournament, and he's very happy to continue that history, I mean, that pattern as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that for the students who are able to defeat the lawyers in their games, their trophy will say, "I beat a lawyer at chess." Yeah. I think it's a really great way to introduce these kids to the legal profession, so I'm really excited about this event.
Great job. Great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Coronado.
Yes, Commissioner. I fully support this. You know, I had the pleasure of, you know, playing some of our students back when I was a lot younger, still a lawyer. And this one particular student that was from Canutio, I kept playing him, and I would beat him all the time, and eventually, one day, he was still in high school, he beat me. And it was, he was just ecstatic about it. Of course, I kind of just turned away without saying anything, right? Beat to a pulp. But that student went on to serve in the Gulf War. He had got his master's degree, he served, he was at the academy, Air Force Academy. Eventually, he went on to Harvard Law School, became a lawyer, is now a practicing attorney in Austin, and so, you know, it is something great for these students that they can say, "I beat a lawyer, and I'm going to try to win, but I have a feeling I'm going to get beat to a pulp."
Great testimonial. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hoggin, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Great event.
Judge, would you like to go ahead and recess now?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner's Court will recess for one hour. It is 12:19 PM.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, happy Fourth of July. We are Frequentia. Somebody make some noise.
So today we are celebrating the Fourth of July here at Ascarate Park. We're in a couple of hours, once it gets dark, we'll have a beautiful fireworks display for the community. You know, Ascarate Park is the heart of El Paso County. This is our county park where families for generations have loved to come and play and fish. So we're really happy to be able to open up the park on the Fourth of July. So hopefully, if there's families out there that weren't able to make it this year, we definitely want to invite them to join us next year.
Okay, our Fourth of July glasses. Welcome to the park. Yeah, good evening, July 4th.
This year, we're doing our VIP event, which I'm standing in front of right now, here at the pavilion, our special events area. It's the first time we've done it here. It's where you get your own personal table, you have areas where you can play games, we have blow-up slides for the children, we even have a movie indoors if the kids would prefer to watch a movie over fireworks. But the tickets for our VIP area this year were $45 for adults, and they provided a brisket dinner. And then for the rest of the public, not at the VIP event, we have multiple food trucks over here at the special events area on our lawn. If you have not been to a fireworks show in Ascarate Park, come on out. It's a fun time, people are enjoying it. You know, parks are a place of democracy where we all, you know, all walks of life are coming together and sharing. So that's kind of the beauty of it here on Independence Day.
Today is the Fourth of July of this year 2024. I was not knowing what to do here in El Paso as a new resident, and I looked into some resources. I was able to discover that here in Ascarate Park, they had a great fireworks event. As a new resident here to the county of El Paso, I'm quite impressed, I feel very comfortable, I'm very grateful that we have something like this existing, you know, where I'm here with my three boys, you know, we're in a safe environment. I can't ask for more. Feliz Dia de la Independencia, Happy Independence Day, El Paso.
That was cool.
We are at El Paso's largest all abilities playground. This is a project that has been many years in the making.
Friends, but I just wanted to say thank you again, and this has been a beautiful project, and everyone in the community is so excited.
You know, this is a great partnership between the organization Moms On Board, the nonprofit, the county of El Paso, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Together, we created the plan of having three all abilities parks instead of just one, so that we could have reached all corners of the county. So there's the first one that opened was Gallegos Park in the far west. And far east was Risinger in Favens, and this one finally today, Central Ascarate.
The flooring is also specially made and conducive to folks with different types of abilities, and so, you know, we've got slides, I mean, it's a great playground, swings. There you go. Ready?
The amenities and the play structures are more inclusive. They allow for wheeled devices to be utilized. So for example, this one over here, the sway fun, it's a seesaw, but a child or a person who's using a wheelchair does not need to exit their wheelchair, they can wheel into it and experience the fun.
And I really want to thank everyone for making this happen. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
What do you think of the park?
It's very good, obviously, and I kind of like it.
Great. Well, are you going to go play?
Yeah.
All right. Have fun, have fun. Thank you. Thank you. That's exactly what this is all about, right? Kayden and his classmates at Riverside Elementary, who've joined us today.
It just opens that communication and that community. Kids without disabilities will not, their play isn't impacted with now having kids with disabilities come and join them. So it opens up that dialogue, it opens up that relationship and that communication, and more importantly, that understanding of everybody in our humanity.
Walk around a day without your identification and see how many times you reach for your wallet, and if you don't have it, what you cannot do. Very excited, happy, and proud that this project has finally come to fruition.
Because this is an initiative that the county started working on, along with Border Network for Human Rights, many, many years ago, nine, almost 10 years ago.
I know the government works slow, but, you know, we persevered and we didn't give up.
We did have to talk to all of our community partners to make sure that this library card would be accepted as a form of ID, and I'm really happy to report that everyone understands why this program is important.
It's a very good program that came over here, especially here in Favens. The community needs something like this to be enhanced and for everybody to know, and it will help all of us.
But you have different communities who just can't get that state-issued ID, but because they have access to this enhanced library card, they'll be able to engage in live activities that they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
This is going to help people access banking services, healthcare, medical services. It'll help folks with schools, with libraries.
You've got folks who need to be able to get copies of their kid's birth certificates from the county clerk, who can now use this ID to do that as well. You have people who maybe don't have an ID and so are afraid to report that they've been the victim of a crime to police, because they know that the police might ask them for ID. So now having this enhanced library card will give them that security that they know they can call and ask the police for help.
This is a great example of a partnership that we have with the city. We can do more of these, I think, if we try. We are providing one more level of inclusivity for all of the residents here in El Paso. That's what I think the county has espoused, the value of being inclusive, and this, I think embodies that.
I bet you've heard about Route 66, but what about the Mission Trail? It may be only nine miles long, but it's a very special part of the area near El Paso, and it might just be a fun vacation for the entire family. El Paso County Commissioner of Precinct 13, Eliana Hoggin, joins me this morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Daryl, for the invitation.
El Paso. I've heard about El Paso, I've never been, but now I want to hear from you everything I can about El Paso.
And that's why we're here, because we want to invite people to come and get to know El Paso. Specifically, we're kicking off the tourist season along the Mission Trail, which, like you said, is a nine-mile stretch of road encompassing three historic missions. These missions represent about 350 years of our culture, our history, our traditions. On any given weekend, you can still see weddings being performed, quinceañeras, the Tigua cultural dancers. So these are still active missions that are very much a part of the community. We have wonderful art galleries there, if you like art. We've got great restaurants, a brewery, cafes, and of course, the Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, which offers free concerts every single weekend.
So I must say, El Paso has to be a must-visit destination, because they don't make documentaries about anything nowadays. There's a documentary that was just made about El Paso.
Yeah, we're very proud of all of the national attention that El Paso is receiving. And just to mention some more recognitions that we're very, very proud of, so for 2023, Texas Travel Magazine named the Mission Trail the best historic site in Texas. And one of the small communities located along the Mission Trail, San Elisario, the city of San Elisario, which is home to the Presidio Chapel of San Elisario, was named the best historic small town in America for 2023 by USA Today.
And what's special that you guys, I'm sure you guys don't have a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer, but there's some special stuff that'll be happening this summer.
Well, on any third Sunday of the month, folks can come down to San Elisario, where we have an art market. We have a lot of wonderful, wonderful local artists who will show off all of their artistry. We also have a reenactment of Billy the Kid breaking into the, what was then the El Paso County Jail to break out a friend of his from jail. So we have some local actors who do a reenactment, and it's just a very fun environment. There's a lot to do, a lot to see, you can walk around, of course, explore the chapel. We also have a lot of great restaurants and new businesses that have opened up. So for example, near the Socorro Mission in Socorro, Texas, we have a new brewery, we have a cafe, we have some great restaurants. And then if you want to go to the Isleta Mission, that's where we, it's located right next to Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, where, as I mentioned, they have a lot of free concerts. You also have a lot of Tigua pottery, so that's the home of the Isleta del Sur Pueblo. So you have a lot of native pottery there. They bake their bread fresh in the oven, so you can see how bread is baked in the old tradition. So it's just really great. There's plenty for everyone to enjoy.
It sounds like it's a lot of history, but you guys have incorporated a lot of entertainment to bring that into learning history about El Paso.
Definitely. So we're really proud of our heritage and our traditions, and one of the neatest things, I think, about the missions is that they're still very active parts of our community. So a lot of times, you go to historical places, and you know, they're roped off, and you can't really go in, you kind of have to see them from afar, and that's not the case with our missions. With our missions, they're still very active, so mass is still held there on Sundays.
Okay, so for someone who's never been to El Paso, what's the perfect blueprint to really enjoy El Paso for the first time?
Well, we have so much to do, we have so many attractions. So definitely, you know, we want to start with the Mission Trail, we want to invite everyone to come out to the Mission Trail. But we also have water parks, we also have a baseball stadium. So we have a lot to do in El Paso, and I think a lot of times, El Paso is, you know, folks kind of drive through El Paso on their way to somewhere else, but it's just so worth it to stop for a few days and spend time in El Paso. We definitely want El Paso to become a destination city.
Commissioner Eliana Hoggin, thank you so much for joining me this morning.
Thank you for the invitation.
If you would like to learn more information about El Paso or planning your vacation to this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen. this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten a vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visita ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacúnate.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Fourth of July. We are Freuencia. Somebody make some noise.
So today, we are celebrating the Fourth of July here at Ascari Park. We're in a couple of hours. Once it gets dark, we'll have a beautiful fireworks display for the community. You know, Ascari Park is the heart of El Paso County. This is our county park where families for generations have loved to come and play and fish. So we're really happy to be able to open up the park on the Fourth of July. So hopefully, if there's families out there that weren't able to make it this year, we definitely want to invite them to join us next year.
We're getting our Fourth of July glasses.
Welcome.
Yeah, it's July 4th.
This year, we're doing our VIP event, which I'm standing in front of right now here at the pavilion, our special events area. It's the first time we've done it here. So it's where you get your own personal table. You have areas where you can play games. We have blow-up slides for the children. We even have a movie indoors if the kids would prefer to watch a movie over fireworks. But the tickets for our VIP area this year were $45 for adults, and they provided a brisket dinner. And then for the rest of the public, not at the VIP event. We have multiple food trucks over here at the special events area on our lawn. If you have not been to a fireworks show in Ascari Park, come on out. It's a fun time. People are enjoying it. You know, parks are a place of democracy where we all, you know, all walks of life are coming together and sharing. So that's kind of the beauty of it here on Independence Day.
Today is the Fourth of July of this year, 2024. I was not knowing what to do here in El Paso as a new resident. And I looked into some resources. I was able to discover that here in Ascari Park, they had a great fireworks event. As a new resident here to the County of El Paso, I'm quite impressed. I feel very comfortable. I'm very grateful that we have something like this existing, you know, where I'm here with my three boys, you know, we're in a safe environment. I can't ask for more. Feliz Dia de la Paz. Happy Independence Day, El Paso.
That was cool.
We are at El Paso's largest all-abilities playground. This is a project that has been many years in the making.
Friends, but I just wanted to say thank you again. And this has been a beautiful project. And everyone in the community is so excited.
You know, this is a great partnership between the organization Moms On Board, the nonprofit, the County of El Paso, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Together, we created the plan of having three all-abilities parks instead of just one, so that we could have reached all corners of the county. So there's the first one that opened was Gallegos Park in the far west. And far east was Risinger in Fabens. And this one finally today, Central Ascari.
The flooring is also specially made and conducive to folks with different types of abilities. And so, you know, we've got slides. I mean, it's a great playground, swings.
There you go. Ready?
The amenities and the play structures are more inclusive. They allow for wheeled devices to be utilized. So for example, this one over here, the sway fun, it's a seesaw. But a child or a person who's using a wheelchair does not need to exit their wheelchair. They can wheel into it and experience the fun.
And I really want to thank everyone for making this happen. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
What do you think of the park?
It's very good, obviously, and I kind of like it.
Great, well, are you gonna go play?
Yeah.
All right. Have fun, have fun. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's exactly what this is all about, right? Kayden and his classmates at Riverside Elementary who joined us today.
It just opens that communication and that community. Kids without disabilities will not, their play isn't impacted with now having kids with disabilities come and join them. So it opens up that dialogue. It opens up that relationship and that communication. And more importantly, that understanding of everybody in our humanity.
Walk around a day without your identification and see how many times you reach for your wallet. If you don't have it, what you cannot do. Very excited, happy, and proud that this project has finally come to fruition.
Because this is an initiative that the county started working on along with Border Network for Human Rights many, many years ago, nine, almost 10 years ago.
I know the government works slow, but you know, we persevered and we didn't give up.
We did have to talk to all of our community partners to make sure that this library card would be accepted as a form of ID. And I'm really happy to report that everyone understands why this program is important.
It's a very good program that came over here, especially here in Fabens. The community needs something like this to be enhanced and for everybody to know. And it will help all of us.
But you have different communities who just can't get that state-issued ID. But because they have access to this enhanced library card, they'll be able to engage in live activities that they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
This is going to help people access banking services, healthcare, medical services. It'll help folks with schools, with libraries.
You've got folks who need to be able to get copies of their kid's birth certificates from the county clerk, who can now use this ID to do that as well. You have people who maybe don't have an ID and so are afraid to report that they've been the victim of a crime to police because they know that the police might ask them for ID. So now having this enhanced library card will give them that security that they know they can call and ask the police for help.
This is a great example of a partnership that we have with the city. We can do more of these, I think, if we try. We are providing one more level of inclusivity for all of the residents here in El Paso. That's what I think the county has espoused, the value of being inclusive. And this, I think, embodies that.
I bet you've heard about Route 66, but what about the Mission Trail? It may be only nine miles long, but it's a very special part of the area near El Paso. And it might just be a fun vacation for the entire family. El Paso County Commissioner of Precinct 13, Eliana Hoggan, joins me this morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Darryl, for the invitation.
El Paso. I've heard about El Paso. I've never been, but now I want to hear from you everything I can about El Paso.
And that's why we're here, because we want to invite people to come and get to know El Paso. Specifically, we're kicking off the tourist season along the Mission Trail, which, like you said, is a nine-mile stretch of road encompassing three historic missions. These missions represent about 350 years of our culture, our history, our traditions. On any given weekend, you can still see weddings being performed, quinceañeras, the Tigua cultural dancers. So these are still active missions that are very much a part of the community. We have wonderful art galleries there if you like art. We've got great restaurants, a brewery, cafes, and of course, the Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, which offers free concerts every single weekend.
So I must say, El Paso has to be a must-visit destination because they don't make documentaries about anything nowadays. There's a documentary that was just made about El Paso.
Yeah, we're very proud of all of the national attention that El Paso is receiving. And just to mention some more recognitions that we're very, very proud of. So for 2023, Texas Travel Magazine named the Mission Trail the best historic site in Texas. And one of the small communities located along the Mission Trail, San Elizario, the city of San Elizario, which is home to the Presidio Chapel of San Elizario, was named the best historic small town in America for 2023 by USA Today.
And what's special that you got? I'm sure you guys don't have a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer, but there's some special stuff that'll be happening this summer.
Well, on any third Sunday of the month, folks can come down to San Elizario where we have an art market. We have a lot of wonderful, wonderful local artists who will show off all of their artistry. We also have a reenactment of Billy the Kid breaking into what was then the El Paso County Jail to break out a friend of his from jail. So we have some local actors who do a reenactment. And it's just a very fun environment. There's a lot to do, a lot to see. You can walk around, of course, explore the chapel. And we also have a lot of great restaurants and new businesses that have opened up. So for example, near the Socorro Mission in Socorro, Texas, we have a new brewery. We have a cafe. We have some great restaurants. And then if you want to go to the Isleta Mission, that's where we, it's located right next to Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, where, as I mentioned, they have a lot of free concerts. You also have a lot of Tigua pottery, so that's the home of the Isleta del Sur Pueblo. So you have a lot of native pottery there. They bake their bread fresh in the oven, so you can see how bread is baked in the old tradition. So it's just really great. There's plenty for everyone to enjoy.
It sounds like it's a lot of history, but you guys have incorporated a lot of entertainment to bring that into learning history about El Paso.
Definitely. So we're really proud of our heritage and our traditions. And one of the neatest things, I think, about the missions is that they're still very active parts of our community. So a lot of times, you go to historical places and, you know, they're roped off and you can't really go in. You kind of have to see them from afar. And that's not the case with our missions. With our missions, they're still very active. So Mass is still held there on Sundays.
Okay, so for someone who's never been to El Paso, what's the perfect blueprint to really enjoy El Paso for the first time?
Well, we have so much to do. We have so many attractions. So definitely, you know, we want to start with the Mission Trail. We want to invite everyone to come out to the Mission Trail. But we also have water parks. We also have a baseball stadium. So we have a lot to do in El Paso. And I think a lot of times, El Paso is, you know, folks kind of drive through El Paso on their way to somewhere else, but it's just so worth it to stop for a few days and spend time in El Paso. We definitely want El Paso to become a destination city.
Commissioner Eliana Hoggan, thank you so much for joining me this morning.
Thank you for the invitation.
If you'd like to learn more information about El Paso or planning your vacation to this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Fourth of July. We are Frequentia. Somebody make some noise.
So today we are celebrating the Fourth of July here at Ascarate Park. We're in a couple of hours. Once it gets dark, we'll have a beautiful fireworks display for the community. You know, Ascarate Park is the heart of El Paso County. This is our county park where families for generations have loved to come and play and fish. So we're really happy to be able to open up the park on the Fourth of July. So hopefully, if there's families out there that weren't able to make it this year, we definitely want to invite them to join us next year.
This year, we're doing our VIP event, which I'm standing in front of right now here at the pavilion, our special events area. It's the first time we've done it here. It's where you get your own personal table. You have areas where you can play games. We have blow-up slides for the children. We even have a movie indoors if the kids would prefer to watch a movie over fireworks. But the tickets for our VIP area this year were $45 for adults, and they provided a brisket dinner. And then for the rest of the public, not at the VIP event, we have multiple food trucks over here at the special events area on our lawn. If you have not been to a fireworks show in Ascarate Park, come on out. It's a fun time. People are enjoying it. You know, parks are a place of democracy where we all, you know, all walks of life are coming together and sharing. So that's kind of the beauty of it here on Independence Day.
Today is the Fourth of July of this year, 2024. I was not knowing what to do here in El Paso as a new resident. And I looked into some resources. I was able to discover that here in Ascarate Park, they had a great fireworks event. As a new resident here to the county of El Paso, I'm quite impressed. I feel very comfortable. I'm very grateful that we have something like this existing, you know, where I'm here with my three boys, you know, we're in a safe environment. I can't ask for more. Feliz Dia de Independencia, Happy Independence Day, El Paso.
We are at El Paso's largest all abilities playground. This is a project that has been many years in the making.
Friends, but I just wanted to say thank you again, and this has been a beautiful project, and everyone in the community is so excited.
You know, this is a great partnership between the organization Moms On Board, the nonprofit, the county of El Paso, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Together, we created the plan of having three all abilities parks instead of just one, so that we could have reached all corners of the county. So there's the first one that opened was Gallegos Park in the far west. And far east was Risinger in Fayetteville, and this one finally today, Central Ascarate.
The flooring is also specially made and conducive to folks with different types of abilities. And so, you know, we've got slides. I mean, it's a great playground, swings.
There you go. Ready?
The amenities and the play structures are more inclusive. They allow for wheeled devices to be utilized. So for example, this one over here, the Sway Fun, it's a seesaw, but a child or a person who's using a wheelchair does not need to exit their wheelchair. They can wheel into it and experience the fun.
And I really want to thank everyone for making this happen. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks for joining us.
Welcome.
What do you think of the park?
It's very good, obviously, and I kind of like it.
Great, well, are you going to go play?
Yeah.
All right. Have fun, have fun. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's exactly what this is all about, right? Kayden and his classmates at Riverside Elementary who've joined us today.
It just opens that communication and that community. Kids without disabilities will not, their play isn't impacted with now having kids with disabilities come and join them. So it opens up that dialogue. It opens up that relationship and that communication. And more importantly, that understanding of everybody in our humanity.
Walk around a day without your identification and see how many times you reach for your wallet and if you don't have it, what you cannot do. Very excited, happy and proud that this project has finally come to fruition.
Because this is an initiative that the county started working on along with Border Network for Human Rights many, many years ago, nine, almost 10 years ago.
I know the government works slow, but you know, we persevered and we didn't give up.
We did have to talk to all of our community partners to make sure that this library card would be accepted as a form of ID. And I'm really happy to report that everyone understands why this program is important.
It's a very good program that came over here, especially here in Fayetteville. The community needs something like this to be enhanced and for everybody to know. And it will help all of us.
But you have different communities who just can't get that state issued ID, but because they have access to this enhanced library card, they'll be able to engage in live activities that they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
This is going to help people access banking services, healthcare, medical services. It'll help folks with schools, with libraries.
You've got folks who need to be able to get copies of their kid's birth certificates from the county clerk who can now use this ID to do that as well. You have people who maybe don't have an ID and so are afraid to report that they've been the victim of a crime to police because they know that the police might ask them for ID. So now having this enhanced library card will give them that security that they know they can call and ask the police for help.
This is a great example of a partnership that we have with the city. We can do more of these, I think, if we try. We are providing one more level of inclusivity for all of the residents here in El Paso. That's what I think the county has espoused, the value of being inclusive, and this, I think embodies that.
I bet you've heard about Route 66, but what about the Mission Trail? It may be only nine miles long, but it's a very special part of the area near El Paso, and it might just be a fun vacation for the entire family. El Paso County Commissioner of Precinct 13, Eliana Hogue, joins me this morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Darryl, for the invitation.
El Paso. I've heard about El Paso. I've never been, but now I want to hear from you everything I can about El Paso.
And that's why we're here, because we want to invite people to come and get to know El Paso. Specifically, we're kicking off the tourist season along the Mission Trail, which, like you said, is a nine-mile stretch of road encompassing three historic missions. These missions represent about 350 years of our culture, our history, our traditions. On any given weekend, you can still see weddings being performed, quinceañeras, the Tigua cultural dancers. So these are still active missions that are very much a part of the community. We have wonderful art galleries there if you like art. We've got great restaurants, a brewery, cafes, and of course, the Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, which offers free concerts every single weekend.
So I must say, El Paso has to be a must-visit destination because they don't make documentaries about anything nowadays. There's a documentary that was just made about El Paso.
Yeah, we're very proud of all of the national attention that El Paso is receiving. And just to mention some more recognitions that we're very, very proud of. So for 2023, Texas Travel Magazine named the Mission Trail the best historic site in Texas. And one of the small communities located along the Mission Trail, San Elizario, the city of San Elizario, which is home to the Presidio Chapel of San Elizario, was named the best historic small town in America for 2023 by USA Today.
And what's special that you guys, I'm sure you guys don't have a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer, but there's some special stuff that'll be happening this summer.
Well, on any third Sunday of the month, folks can come down to San Elizario where we have an art market. We have a lot of wonderful, wonderful local artists who will show off all of their artistry. We also have a reenactment of Billy the Kid breaking into the, what was then the El Paso County Jail to break out a friend of his from jail. So we have some local actors who do a reenactment. And it's just a very fun environment. There's a lot to do, a lot to see. You can walk around, of course, explore the chapel. We also have a lot of great restaurants and new businesses that have opened up. So for example, near the Socorro Mission in Socorro, Texas, we have a new brewery, we have a cafe, we have some great restaurants. And then if you want to go to the Isleta Mission, that's where we, it's located right next to Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, where, as I mentioned, they have a lot of free concerts. You also have a lot of Tigua pottery, so that's the home of the Isleta del Sur Pueblo. So you have a lot of native pottery there. They bake their bread fresh in the oven, so you can see how bread is baked in the old tradition. So it's just really great. There's plenty for everyone to enjoy.
It sounds like it's a lot of history, but you guys have incorporated a lot of entertainment to bring that into learning history about El Paso.
Definitely. So we're really proud of our heritage and our traditions. And one of the neatest things, I think, about the missions is that they're still very active parts of our community. So a lot of times you go to historical places and you know, they're roped off and you can't really go in, you kind of have to see them from afar. And that's not the case with our missions. With our missions, they're still very active, so mass is still held there on Sundays.
Okay, so for someone who's never been to El Paso, what's the perfect blueprint to really enjoy El Paso for the first time?
Well, we have so much to do. We have so many attractions. So definitely, you know, we want to start with the Mission Trail. We want to invite everyone to come out to the Mission Trail. But we also have water parks. We also have a baseball stadium. So we have a lot to do in El Paso. And I think a lot of times El Paso is, you know, folks kind of drive through El Paso on their way to somewhere else, but it's just so worth it to stop for a few days and spend time in El Paso. We definitely want El Paso to become a destination city.
Commissioner Eliana Hogue, thank you so much for joining me this morning.
Thank you for the invitation.
If you'd like to learn more information about El Paso or planning your vacation to this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen. or planning your vacation to this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Fourth of July. We are Frecuencia. Somebody make some noise.
So today we are celebrating the Fourth of July here at Ascarate Park. We're in a couple of hours. Once it gets dark, we'll have a beautiful fireworks display for the community. You know, Ascarate Park is the heart of El Paso County. This is our county park where families for generations have loved to come and play and fish. So we're really happy to be able to open up the park on the Fourth of July. So hopefully, if there's families out there that weren't able to make it this year, we definitely want to invite them to join us next year.
This year, we're doing our VIP event, which I'm standing in front of right now, here at the pavilion, our special events area. It's the first time we've done it here. It's where you get your own personal table. You have areas where you can play games. We have blow-up slides for the children. We even have a movie indoors if the kids would prefer to watch a movie over fireworks. But the tickets for our VIP area this year were $45 for adults, and that provided a brisket dinner. And then for the rest of the public, not at the VIP event, we have multiple food trucks over here at the special events area on our lawn. If you have not been to a fireworks show in Ascarate Park, come on out. It's a fun time. People are enjoying it. You know, parks are a place of democracy where we all, you know, all walks of life are coming together and sharing. So that's kind of the beauty of it here on Independence Day.
Today is the Fourth of July of this year, 2024. I was not knowing what to do here in El Paso as a new resident, and I looked into some resources. I was able to discover that here in Ascarate Park, they had a great fireworks event. As a new resident here to the county of El Paso, I'm quite impressed. I feel very comfortable. I'm very grateful that we have something like this existing, you know, where I'm here with my three boys, you know, we're in a safe environment. I can't ask for more. Feliz Dia de la Venezuela. Happy Independence Day, El Paso.
That was cool.
We are at El Paso's largest All Abilities Playground. This is a project that has been many years in the making.
Friends, but I just wanted to say thank you again, and this has been a beautiful project, and everyone in the community is so excited.
You know, this is a great partnership between the organization Moms On Board, the nonprofit, the county of El Paso, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Together, we created the plan of having three All Abilities Parks instead of just one, so that we could have reached all corners of the county. So there's the first one that opened was Gallegos Park in the far west. And far east was Risinger in Fabinz, and this one finally today, Central Ascarate.
The flooring is also specially made and conducive to folks with different types of abilities. And so, you know, we've got slides. I mean, it's a great playground, swings.
There you go. Ready?
The amenities and the play structures are more inclusive. They allow for wheeled devices to be utilized. So for example, this one over here, the Sway Fun, it's a seesaw, but a child or a person who's using a wheelchair does not need to exit their wheelchair. They can wheel into it and experience the fun.
And I really want to thank everyone for making this happen. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
What do you think of the park?
It's very good, obviously, and I kind of like it.
Great. Well, are you going to go play?
Yeah.
All right. Have fun, have fun. Thank you, thank you. That's exactly what this is all about, right? Kayden and his classmates at Riverside Elementary, who've joined us today.
It just opens that communication and that community. Kids without disabilities will not, their play isn't impacted with now having kids with disabilities come and join them. So it opens up that dialogue. It opens up that relationship and that communication. And more importantly, that understanding of everybody in our humanity.
Walk around a day without your identification and see how many times you reach for your wallet. If you don't have it, what you cannot do. Very excited, happy, and proud that this project has finally come to fruition.
Because this is an initiative that the county started working on along with Border Network for Human Rights many, many years ago, nine, almost 10 years ago.
I know the government works slow, but you know, we persevered and we didn't give up.
We did have to talk to all of our community partners to make sure that this library card would be accepted as a form of ID. And I'm really happy to report that everyone understands why this program is important.
It's a very good program that came over here, especially here in Fabinz. The community needs something like this to be enhanced and for everybody to know, and it will help all of us.
But you have different communities who just can't get that state-issued ID, but because they have access to this enhanced library card, they'll be able to engage in a lot of activities that they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
This is going to help people access banking services, healthcare, medical services. It'll help folks with schools, with libraries.
You've got folks who need to be able to get copies of their kid's birth certificates from the county clerk, who can now use this ID to do that as well. You have people who maybe don't have an ID and so are afraid to report that they've been the victim of a crime to police because they know that the police might ask them for ID. So now having this enhanced library card will give them that security that they know they can call and ask the police for help.
This is a great example of a partnership that we have with the city. We can do more of these, I think, if we try. We are providing one more level of inclusivity for all of the residents here in El Paso. That's what I think the county has espoused, the value of being inclusive, and this, I think, embodies that.
I bet you've heard about Route 66, but what about the Mission Trail? It may be only nine miles long, but it's a very special part of the area near El Paso, and it might just be a fun vacation for the entire family. El Paso County Commissioner of Precinct 13, Eliana Hogueen, joins me this morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Daryl, for the invitation.
El Paso. I've heard about El Paso. I've never been, but now I want to hear from you everything I can about El Paso.
And that's why we're here, because we want to invite people to come and get to know El Paso. Specifically, we're kicking off the tourist season along the Mission Trail, which, like you said, is a nine-mile stretch of road encompassing three historic missions. These missions represent about 350 years of our culture, our history, our traditions. On any given weekend, you can still see weddings being performed, quinceañeras, the Tigua cultural dancers. So these are still active missions that are very much a part of the community. We have wonderful art galleries there if you like art. We've got great restaurants, a brewery, cafes, and of course, the Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, which offers free concerts every single weekend.
So I must say, El Paso has to be a must-visit destination because they don't make documentaries about anything nowadays. There's a documentary that was just made about El Paso.
Yeah, we're very proud of all of the national attention that El Paso is receiving. And just to mention some more recognitions that we're very, very proud of. So for 2023, Texas Travel Magazine named the Mission Trail the best historic site in Texas. And one of the small communities located along the Mission Trail, San Elizario, the city of San Elizario, which is home to the Presidio Chapel of San Elizario, was named the best historic small town in America for 2023 by USA Today.
And what's special that you guys, I'm sure you guys don't have a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer, but there's some special stuff that'll be happening this summer.
Well, on any third Sunday of the month, folks can come down to San Elizario, where we have an art market. We have a lot of wonderful, wonderful local artists who will show off all of their artistry. We also have a reenactment of Billy the Kid breaking into the, what was then, the El Paso County Jail to break out a friend of his from jail. So we have some local actors who do a reenactment, and it's just a very fun environment. There's a lot to do, a lot to see. You can walk around, of course, explore the chapel. We also have a lot of great restaurants and new businesses that have opened up. So for example, near the Socorro Mission in Socorro, Texas, we have a new brewery. We have a cafe. We have some great restaurants. And then if you want to go to the Isleta Mission, that's where we, it's located right next to Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, where, as I mentioned, they have a lot of free concerts. You also have a lot of Tigua pottery, so that's the home of the Isleta del Sur Pueblo. So you have a lot of native pottery there. They bake their bread fresh in the oven. So you can see how bread is baked in the old tradition. So it's just really great. There's plenty for everyone to enjoy.
It sounds like it's a lot of history, but you guys have incorporated a lot of entertainment to bring that into learning history about El Paso.
Definitely. So we're really proud of our heritage and our traditions. And one of the neatest things, I think, about the missions is that they're still very active parts of our community. So a lot of times you go to historical places and, you know, they're roped off and you can't really go in. You kind of have to see them from afar, and that's not the case with our missions. With our missions, they're still very active, so Mass is still held there on Sundays.
Okay, so for someone who's never been to El Paso, what's the perfect blueprint to really enjoy El Paso for the first time?
Well, we have so much to do. We have so many attractions. So definitely, you know, we want to start with the Mission Trail. We want to invite everyone to come out to the Mission Trail. But we also have water parks. We also have a baseball stadium. So we have a lot to do in El Paso, and I think a lot of times El Paso is, you know, folks kind of drive through El Paso on their way to somewhere else, but it's just so worth it to stop for a few days and spend time in El Paso. We definitely want El Paso to become a destination city.
Commissioner Eliana Hogueen, thank you so much for joining me this morning.
Thank you for the invitation.
If you would like to learn more information about El Paso or planning your vacation to this amazing destination, you can go to the website you see on your screen.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. We'd like to go to the items that were pulled from the consent agenda by Commissioner Hogueen. Item 4R, approve and authorize the county judge to sign an agreement with M&amp;K Architects LLC for the provision of professional services related to the design services for the AgriLife Office at the Ascarate Annex Site. Funding is available in CP, CO23A, MMANX renovations, contract number 20240253. Would you like for me to read it in S as well?
Yes.
Okay, item 4S. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign an agreement with M&amp;K Architects Inc. for the provision of professional services related to the design services for the Corbin-Sambrano Facility Design, contract number 20240473.
And I'm not sure if my question is more to Norma or maybe Jose. So I know that these two are projects that are on the proposed GEO bond, which of course hasn't been approved yet. So I'm just wondering, is the idea, are we going to be trying to do the design service for all of the projects that we're considering for the bond or only these two?
No, Commissioner, go ahead, Jose. No, Commissioner, this is, we have funds, and this is just for design. If the court, I mean, if these projects move forward to be funded through the COs or GOs, then that would be an option. But if that's not the case, then we would have these projects shovel-ready, and we would be eligible to go and apply for other grants or other sources, look for other sources of funding to fund these two projects.
So if the bonds are approved, whether it's a GEO or a CO, then these funds for these services will come out of the bond proceeds or no?
No, I believe these have been accounted for in the project cost that we've seen. So these would actually be spent now. We could do a, we, I apologize. So, saludos a the county administration. We could add funding, a funding reimbursement resolution to the order to allow us to recover any costs that we may have incurred. But I believe these projects have actually already had this design accounted for in the project cost that's been shared with the Boeck and with the Commissioners Court.
Okay. And so the funds are budgeted already for these two specific, for the design work for these two specific projects. They're already in our budget.
I believe so.
Yes, ma'am. Even the Corbin-Sambrano even has a grant that will be used for that project.
There's some American Rescue Plan Act funding associated with that one as well. I think it's a combination of American Rescue Plan Act funding and some of the opioid settlement money that's been made available.
And that's the total 800, or the 800 is on top of whatever other monies are available?
Do not know the exact breakdown. Joel, I don't know if...
Joel has more information.
We're going to keep tagging people until we can completely answer your question, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joel Bishop with County Administration, County Judge. The three funding sources for the demolition and design are from the opioid settlement. That was 500,000, about, I think, 1.25 million from ARPA. And then there's another 850,000 coming in from the congressional grant from Congresswoman Escobar. So those, between those three, and that'll be for more of the dirt work that's coming. But the design is already covered and is not part of the bond. And that reduced the bond amount. So they did an adjustment and it reduced it proportionally.
Okay, great. And the same is true for the AgriLife Office at Ascarate. That funding is separate and apart from the bond proceeds?
Yes, Commissioner. So that one is actually funded through a previous debt issuance that we did in 2023. The initial thought was the funding that had been put into that could have done the design and the construction, but after meeting with all the offices involved, it was determined that a larger space was needed. And so that's the reason why that turned into a larger bond project, and you see that one on your project listing. But the idea here is, as Ms. Bellasio has mentioned, to get the design going, at the minimum, have a shovel-ready project once that project comes, and then identify the funding of the construction funds for that project.
Okay, great. Those are all my questions.
We have a motion by Judge Semeniego, second by Commissioner Hogueen. The voting is open. Okay, now to item 10B. Discuss and take appropriate action to direct staff to include the Sun Bowl improvements for further consideration in any potential capital funding items.
Well, thank you. I just wanted, more than anything, wanted the opportunity. I know we've brought this up several times, but I've had a lot of feedback about the, at least having a discussion to see where we're at, what do we feel about that? It seems like a lot of alumni and a lot of individuals feel like it did well on the online, and then maybe didn't do as well on the individual ones. But I really think that the community deserves at least a discussion on this item. And what I see as positive, obviously, is it has the opportunity for revenue. A lot of the have asked me, you know, some of the detail, and I explained to them and I talked to legal this morning, that we still have to look at what is the potential of that. And I don't think we've seen or evaluated what the potential would be. For example, the opportunity to either get revenue from having more concerts or the opportunity for us to be able to have access to the Sun Bowl in, you know, at different times. I think we've talked about three or four opportunities. But so I think I felt important from the comments that I've received about the fact, do they really, you know, does the community understand, you know... you know, that there are some opportunities from a revenue perspective? And also, one of the things that, I know that each one of the precincts, you've got certain things that you look at each precinct that's important to you. I have sort of the responsibility of look at things that are full for the entire county. And they consider that this is one that could impact the entire county. So really not asking anything more than trying to get your feedback and so the community understands how the commissioners feel about. I think they know more or less that I'm very supportive. I started this process almost five months ago when Dr. Wilson came to my office and explained, you know, what they were looking at, that they had lost opportunities with concerts because they don't have the facility or to accommodate, especially the in and out of going in and breaking down in a concert and leaving quickly. They're limited to that because right now the entrance is very narrow. The fact that we get a lot of great comments from the Sun Bowl, I mean, second oldest Sun Bowl in the country, and yet it has horrible facilities for the guest, the guest team. Even though the one for the actual, the teams are not that well. But the ones that are pretty deplorable are the ones for the guest team. Had an opportunity to talk to Bernio Levas, who's the president of the Sun Bowl Association. And he also feels that we're losing out on opportunities. They do struggle if there's any opportunity for somebody not to want to play at the Sun Bowl when it's by the standings and the way the season ends. Sometimes they're sort of, you know, they're pigeonholed into certain Sun Bowls, I mean, to certain bowls. But when there's an opportunity to choose, it's always a facility that gets them to get the lesser team. And so, like I said, I just wanted an opportunity to see what was felt about, you know, this idea of taking it to the voter instead of us sort of eliminating it. I realize the huge challenge is that whenever you put something in like this, then you also have to take something out. And then I'm very aware of that. But I still think it's a revenue opportunity. It does have the quality of life. It does put us at a different situation as a community. I mean, there's nothing that's going to race or standard as a community than having that exposure of events and concerts coming in. Remember, you know, the La Hoya? Almost 45,000 people went there and, you know, it was pretty exciting to have that number of people in one place. And I still think we have that opportunity to think about. And I've been pushing hard, you know, what's going to bring revenue versus what's going to be an expense. Revenue can then address some other situations like infrastructure and so forth that we could do from our budget if we increase, you know, the opportunity to get more money into our community. So that's what I just wanted, just to see and hear where everybody's at and let the community know. Because they've, they said, we still don't understand, you know, what's going on as far as what their perception is of the Sun Bowl or have heard more discussions about that. And so that's, that was the intent of this, bringing it up again. Commissioner Coronado?
Judge, thank you, Commissioners. You know, I'm in favor of this project. I just, you know, because of the competing projects that we have with that. But I can't think of any other project county-wide that would really attract more people from out of town than any other venue we have. You know, clearly, one event at the Sun Bowl would probably be, you know, 10 times what any other venue would bring from out of town people to our county and our city. I just think we need to try and, you know, I don't know where we take the funding from. I know the outreach that was made to our community, the number one thing that people are interested in this bond is, number one, water. All the water issues is number one. And number two is parks. And so after that, I don't see what other, you know, where we're going to get the funds for it. I'd be interested in pursuing other resources to try and get this because I think it's something really valuable to the community. You're right, it could not just bring revenue, but it can bring on, you know, tourism to the city. And it's clear, I mean, because for these large concerts, I know I've gone out of town to Phoenix, San Antonio, Dallas, because we don't have them. We can't attract them. And so, you know, I'm in favor of this. I just need, you know, wish to see how we can fund this. I mean, there's really no other avenue from what I see that the projects we did other than maybe taking a little bit from what's proposed at the Coliseum. I'm all in favor of the maintenance that the Coliseum needs, which is about 29, 30 million. And then there's another 30 million that goes behind to a smaller venue for music. But I don't, I don't think even that is enough to fund the 90, 100 million that Sun Bowl is asking. But I think it's a worthwhile project. I'm in favor of exploring whatever other resources we may have for it. I think it'd be great for the community. We can finally start attracting, you know, people to come to our city from out of town and enjoy the other amenities that we have, like, you know, the missions and our mountains, our neighbor cities. I just wish we had more resources available.
Yeah, I think one of the objectives I had is to let the community know that we understand how important this is, but that we're limited. You know, we're limited, where do we get the 99 million to be able to do that? But I didn't want the community to think that we, as this court, didn't understand the impact, that the improvement. Because like you said, maybe we don't do it now. But I think if the community understands and hears that it could be very, very valuable to our community. And so I think, you know, like I said, it's not so much that I thought we could do it because of the, I kept thinking, where do we get the money from? And that's what's the big challenge. But I do want the community to know that we're not dismissing it. Because I think that was the impression and the feedback I got is we're dismissing the impact that it would have of having these large concerts in our community. And, but now we could say, you know, we do appreciate that. Our biggest challenge is where do we get the money from? And that's, I just wanted the community to know that we're sort of have our hands tied, but that we're not dismissing that it would be a huge impact. Because that's the impression I got from the feedback was that we weren't considering. And I have to explain the, where I take the money from. And that's sort of satisfied. So I wanted a broader forum to be able to explain to the community that, you know, we're not dismissing it. It's just that it was very difficult to challenge against parks, against infrastructure, against water, against those things. So that was the main objective that I had.
Judge, can I, can I speak real?
Sure, absolutely.
Can you hear me? I just, you know, want to, you know, make sure that it's very clear to the public and to the rest of the court, my thoughts. And, you know, I've had conversations with Dr. Wilson and with Mr. Center, as well as folks at the Sun Bowl Association. And I let them know that, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't support the county paying for this project. It's not our, not our building. You know, I know that they propose some type of income structure that might be possible, but that would, you know, I'm not even completely sure that that would be the case. You know, there's still a lot of questions that, you know, when it came to, you know, the number of days we would be able to use the venue and how much we would actually have to pay to make sure that we were able to make that money off of the usage of the venue. And we'd have to probably hire somebody to manage it. And, you know, there's just lots of complicated things. And, you know, we have, we started this process a number of months ago. You know, and we've, you know, gone through a very public feedback process. And we've gone, you know, the Boeck has had meetings as well. You know, we did have folks, gave folks the opportunity to opine in those meetings and online. And I think only about 22% of the people who participated in those focus groups and those feedback opportunities said that this would be something that they would support. So, you know, I just, you know, I couldn't, you know, try to remove something else from the list. And, you know, knowing that the feedback that we've gotten, it probably wouldn't pass anyway because of the low level of support that it had. You know, when we started this process, we have close to a billion dollars of needs and wants that the county, you know, should be trying to invest in. And, you know, we're not even going to be able to do all of those. You know, I, so, you know, I've made it clear, I think, from the very beginning that though I understand the need to make these renovations to the Sun Bowl, I just don't think it can be done with county money. And I also, you know, talked to Dr. Wilson about, you know, how does, how do these things get paid for at other colleges? And, you know, we talked about the fact that it's usually, they're private partners that will come in and help fund that. And so I don't think that there's been much work in the way of looking for private partners or private funders. I'm not sure if they just came to us because they knew that we were going to have the opportunity to do some bonding possibly. But it seems to me that the state of Texas, that has billions of dollars in plus, and the University of Texas system has lots of money. And, you know, I just, you know, couldn't, you know, put local taxpayers on the line for something that I think could easily be paid for by the state or through a private campaign as all other stadiums are funded. So I don't have anything else to say. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but I'd like to move to delete the item from the agenda.
Judge Commissioners, Eric Rosales, Nagaglony, Assistant County Attorney. So you don't have to take any action on this item since it's read into the record.
Yeah, that's surprising that you're saying that, Commissioner. It was just a presentation. It doesn't have to be removed from the agenda.
The court could take action if it would like because there is action to maybe ask staff to include it back in your list. But you don't have to take action if you don't want to. You can.
Yeah, I was just looking for an opportunity so that the public knows that at least we're, we're having this discussions. And there's, I didn't ask for action at this time. Judge? Yes, sir.
Okay, but we do have, we'll consider Commissioner Stout's motion if there's a second to, I guess, to delete the item. So I don't.
I mean, I can rescind the motion if we're, I mean, yeah, that's fine. I can rescind the motion and we can have other conversation if other people want to talk.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
And Judge, I can appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Coronados. As I went to the meetings in my precinct over this period with the Boeck, the, I think 95% of the folks there that bothered to go to the meetings were very against it. Matter of fact, a couple of events that I've gone to after that, several people have approached me saying that, no, there's no way that they would support something like that. So yes, the Sun Bowl is something that I'm very proud of when it happens here in El Paso every year. But there's got to be another way that UTEP finds funding for that because it's, I'm not willing to delete a program from the county. And over and above what the Boeck has advised us, we commission them for a reason and I want to stick to that reason. And they indicated that UTEP was not in the top tier of their recommendations. So I would hope that we put this one to bed now after this. But I can appreciate, and I said myself that I was willing to listen to more of this conversation, but I'm not in favor of moving forward with it.
Okay. That was the objective.
We'll take no action for item 10B.
Thank you.
Item 11, Economic Development, 11A, ARP Project Number 1160. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the inter-local agreement with the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority for the completion of a study of the county's Torneo Port of Entry in the amount of $1,350,000. Funding is available on SG AR Plan 21 Operating Expense, contract number 20240211.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners, Salanderos, with County Administration on behalf of Economic Development. This is phase one of two phases for our ongoing efforts to continue to expand activity at the Torneo Port of Entry. That is going to, at this point, include some critical tasks associated with trying to activate industry awareness of the port of entry with Maquilas in Ciudad Juarez. And so today's action is to authorize us to begin those first set of plans and activities with the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority. We'll be heavily involved in coordination with local stakeholders, including the El Paso NPO, so that we can understand how any changes to traffic are going to affect the regional traffic model that the El Paso NPO has to just help inform what infrastructure might be coming. And I mentioned this as one of two phases. The larger phase is the project that is funded through congressional project funding, the community project funding, excuse me, through Congressman Tony Gonzalez's office, which will actually help us master plan the area between the Fabinz Airport and the Torneo Port of Entry. And so with that, the department would ask for your favorable consideration. And we're available to take any questions that the court may have.
I don't have any questions, but I did want to thank you, Jose and Daniel and Roberto, everyone who has been working so hard to make sure that the Torneo Port of Entry is utilized to the extent that it was meant to be utilized. It's a very important part of our port of entry system in El Paso. And unfortunately, it just hasn't been utilized sufficiently up until now. But I want to thank all of our staff for all of the incredible amount of work that you all are doing. I know that we're going to see, we're going to continue to see increases in the truck traffic because we've already seen some of those increases because of the work that you all are doing. But I'm confident that we're going to continue to see those increases. So thank you.
If I can add to what Commissioner Olguin has said, that when we were over at the cattle mess on that reunion, the vast majority of them said that they crossed over in the Torneos that they were very impressed with the work that the Mexican side has done now. And it saved them. Some of them, it took longer for them to drive from wherever they came from to Juarez than it did to just cross over. So, and so on that went the other way, stayed more in line than it took them to get to Juarez. So a lot of work and it's appreciated.
Sure. This is actually one of the big data points that'll be developed through this process is a cost benefit study so that we can share with Maquilas, who are very efficient. Judge, with your time in Cimentos Chihuahua, very aware of the commitment to productivity and efficiency. And so what this will do is give tangible data points to Maquilas and their administration and their managers to know at what point it becomes more cost efficient to drive out to the port of entry in Torneo. And as we continue to see that development that leads to more interest in developing industrial parks and other supporting infrastructure in that area.
Yeah, and that's so important because right now, I think what dominates the conversation when we talk about the Torneo Port of Entry is, oh, it's so far. But I think once they start seeing the data about how much time and productivity and less goods will be lost. I mean, I think once they see all of those data points, there's not even going to be a question that it's better to use the Torneo Port of Entry than waiting, you know, eight hours, 10 hours, however many hours they're going to have to wait at some of our other bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge?
We have a motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Stout. The voting is open.
I just want to say something. I was able to take a tour of the port of entry out there. And apart from what the, you know, plans here for the commercial traffic, even now, just regular traffic, personal traffic, in vehicular traffic has increased because people are seeing the value of going through there rather than waiting an hour or two at our downtown bridges. And so I was, you know, just, you know, happily, you know, able to receive that message from the director of the port of entry there that their traffic is increasing, not just on the is increasing, not just on the commercial side, but also the personal vehicles that are coming through. And I think that's really the future. It's a port of entry along our border that has the most land. And so it is very feasible to expand it right now. I saw the proposals for the expansion, not just of the personal traffic, but the commercial traffic, even now. They're able to hold quite a substantial amount. And if we're able to get the, and I'm sure the federal government will cooperate in developing some of the other infrastructure and the personnel needs to be able to make it a completely full-fledged commercial traffic. Well, I know there's some needs there for some particular type of, I guess, products that are going to be entered that need additional inspection from the federal government on the Mexican side and our side. And I think when that gets developed, I think it will really even see more of an increase out there. So I'm all in favor of this.
And when we talk about that there was not a lot of traffic, well, you know, there was no infrastructure there. And the amount of investment that they've made, the federal government on the Mexican side has made such an investment. And they're developing things. They have a lot of plans for, and I think this is going to generate, it's not just going to be a matter of opening or, I mean, people coming through, but I think it's this attraction of developing that both sides of. I mean, I'm excited about what it could do to our side, but on their side, they're very excited about the development of those communities that are in those areas. So I think it's a huge economic development initiative.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the team and leadership in Economic Development and also our coordination with the planning and development and public works on this multi-disciplinary item. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Daniel. Roberto, thank you.
Item 12, Grant Applications, 12A, approved and authorized the Criminal Justice Coordination Department to apply for the BJA-FY 24 Second Chance Act Improving Reentry Education and Employment Outcomes Program from October 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2027, in the amount of $900,000 with no county cash match. Contract Number 20240528.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. For the record, Letizia Vizcano, Grants Department Manager. And this is a grant application in the amount of $900,000 to be submitted to the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $900,000 with no cash match. This is a three-year grant application. And if successfully funded, the department will hire two full-time personnel. Mr. Ray will answer any of your questions, if you have any for him.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners. On this grant, it's a grant that is going to be targeting a specific population about, from individuals that have about two years or less in confinement, whether that's jail or, you know, corrections. But this is really in line with the promise program that the county commissioners, specifically Mr. Coronado is spearheading. One of these things is getting these individuals who are just as involved back into, you know, integrating them back into the workforce. We know that there's a lot of barriers out there for these individuals once they've been convicted of crimes. And so a lot of them, after talking with a lot of these individuals, you know, they've served their time, but they feel like they've been given a life sentence because they can't get adequate jobs. They're really getting jobs that they could, you know, really find, and that's not very many. And so through this program, what we're going to be able to do is, once we are in the jail, we're partnering with the sheriff's office, one of those employees will be for them so they can really focus on the population that we're going to have, as well as an employee for us to be able to have specialized care, you know, give referrals. But what this program is going to be really doing is setting up a classroom within the annex where we're going to get high-quality equipment, you know, for teaching, for learning. And we've also partnered with the OC, John Martin, who's going to allow us to provide us a multipurpose room, which we would have the same type of equipment that we have at the jail there so they can continue once they leave the jail. We're also partnering with El Paso Recovery Alliance to provide peer support personnel to help them come along because we all know we need help sometimes. So a lot of this is really trying to fund the El Paso Promise Program, taking the tax burden away from the local community and applying it for, you know, the national grants. And, you know, once we, once they finish obtaining their GED, they'll be able to, will be able to bring in certification training for freight dispatch or any other certifications that we can bring to get them adequate jobs. And not only that, we're also investing, if we get the grant, on a simulator. And we don't know what type it would be, maybe heavy construction, but we're looking at that. But this is, again, something that will help fund, in part, the Promise Program that the Commissioners Court have provided the CJC, you know, that ability to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge. Yeah, I'm very, very supportive of this. I think this is, you know, one of those things where we can jumpstart our, not just our reentry, but our Promise Program. And I really see, we've met with a lot of organizations throughout our county. I just met with the SBA last week. It's not only to get these individuals trained and certified or get, continue their education, but we know that some of these individuals will even be interested in starting their own business. And so to that effect, the SBA will be able to partner, refer people to them with respect to providing loans for these individuals to start their own businesses. So it's not just a training and certification and issue with these people. We want them to become their own business owners. So we're going to explore the full gamut of really focusing on these justice-involved individuals, get them that training and divert them away from the system, at the same time saving resources and money from the justice system to have to supervise them. We know the statistics that, you know, if they get involved in programs and trainings and certifications like this, that probably almost half of them, just because of this program, do not return. And so that in itself is just a great investment to keep these individuals from going. And even those, I think the percentage is even higher as far as recidivism rates for those individuals with the lower offenses. We know our diversion program here works. Having a diversion program even for the people involved in some of these lower-level, I don't want to call them insignificant cases because there's victims related to that. We want to make sure that these individuals understand. But we know that 93% of the people arrested in our county have nothing more than a high school education if they have that. 93%. And that goes very well into, you know, we're the last, we're 24 out of 25 metros in the state in new job creation. And I think this is going to really help and focus on individuals that have all these obstacles to make sure that we help them get through and not come back to the system. So, thank you, Chris and Catherine, for, this is a great opportunity for us to really jumpstart this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stout, second by Judge Samanego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck with that. Thanks.
Before we go into executive session, we are going to be asking item 13C from executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, discuss legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation styled United States versus Texas, number 2450149, county attorney's file number 016523PL, along with its corresponding regular session. Item 14B, discuss and take appropriate action regarding legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation styled United States versus Texas, number 2450149, county attorney's file number 016523PL. We're asking for these two to be deleted. I have a motion by Commissioner Stout, second by Commissioner Olguina. The voting is open. Commissioner Olguina, are you able to vote?
Yes.
carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 13A and 13B pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.076. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kid should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Fourth of July. We are Frecuencia. Somebody make some noise.
So today, we are celebrating the Fourth of July here at Oscarate Park. We're in a couple of hours. Once it gets dark, we'll have a beautiful fireworks display for the community. You know, Oscarate Park is the heart of El Paso County. This is our county park where families for generations have loved to come and play and fish. So we're really happy to be able to open up the park on the Fourth of July. So hopefully, if there's families out there that weren't able to make it this year, we definitely want to invite them to join us next year.
We're getting our Fourth of July glasses. Yeah, it's a Fourth of July party.
This year, we're doing our VIP event, which I'm standing in front of right now, here at the pavilion, our special events area. It's the first time we've done it here. So it's where you get your own personal table. You have areas where you can play games. We have blow-up slides for the children. We even have a movie indoors if the kids would prefer to watch a movie over fireworks. But the tickets for our VIP area this year were $45 for adults. And they provided a brisket dinner. And then for the rest of the public, not at the VIP event, we have multiple food trucks over here at the special events area on our lawn. If you have not been to a fireworks show in a Oscarate Park, come on out. It's a fun time. People are enjoying it. You know, parks are a place of democracy where we all, you know, all walks of life are coming together and sharing. So that's kind of the beauty of it here on Independence Day.
Today, it's the Fourth of July of this year, 2024. I was not knowing what to do here in El Paso as a new resident. And I looked into some resources. I was able to discover that here in Oscarate Park, they had a great fireworks event. As a new resident here to the County of El Paso, I'm quite impressed. I feel very comfortable. I'm very grateful that we have something like this existing, you know, where I'm here with my three boys, you know, we're in a safe environment. I can't ask for more. Feliz Dia de la Paz, happy Independence Day, El Paso.
That was cool.
We are at El Paso's largest all abilities playground. This is a project that has been many years in the making.
Friends, but I just wanted to say thank you again. And this has been a beautiful project. And everyone in the community is so excited.
You know, this is a great partnership between the organization Moms On Board, the nonprofit, the County of El Paso, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Together, we created the plan of having three all abilities parks instead of just one so that we could have reached all corners of the county. So there's the first one that opened was Gallegos Park in the far west. And far east was Risinger in Fabens. And this one, finally, today, Central Oscarate.
One, two, three.
The flooring is also especially made and conducive to folks with different types of abilities. And so, you know, we've got slides. I mean, it's a great playground, swings.
There you go. Ready?
The amenities and the play structures are more inclusive. They allow for wheeled devices to be utilized. So for example, this one over here, the sway fun, it's a seesaw, but a child or a person who's using a wheelchair does not need to exit their wheelchair. They can wheel into it and experience the fun.
And I really want to thank everyone for making this happen. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks for joining us.
Welcome.
What do you think of the park?
It's very good, obviously, and I kind of like it.
Great. Well, are you going to go play?
Yeah.
All right. Have fun, have fun. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's exactly what this is all about, right? Kayden and his classmates at Riverside Elementary who joined us today.
It just opens that communication and that community. Kids without disabilities will not, their play isn't impacted with now having kids with disabilities come and join them. So it opens up that dialogue. It opens up that relationship and that communication. And more importantly, that understanding of everybody in our humanity.
Walk around a day without your identification and see how many times you reach for your wallet, and if you don't have it, what you cannot do. Very excited, happy, and proud that this project has finally come to fruition.
Because this is an initiative that the county started working on, along with Border Network for Human Rights, many, many years ago, nine, almost 10 years ago.
I know the government works slow, but, you know, we persevered and we didn't give up.
We did have to talk to all of our community partners to make sure that this library card would be accepted as a form of ID, and I'm really happy to report that everyone understands why this program is important.
It's a very good program that came over here, especially here in Favens. The community needs something like this to be enhanced and for everybody to know, and it will help all of us.
But you have different communities who just can't get that state-issued ID, but because they have access to this enhanced library card, they'll be able to engage in live activities that they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
This is going to help people access banking services, healthcare, medical services. It'll help folks with schools, with libraries.
You've got folks who need to be able to get copies of their kid's birth certificates from the county clerk, who can now use this ID to do that as well. You have people who maybe don't have an ID and so are afraid to report that they've been the victim of a crime to police, because they know that the police might ask them for ID. So now having this enhanced library card will give them that security that they know they can call and ask the police for help.
This is a great example of a partnership that we have with the city. We can do more of these, I think, if we try. We are providing one more level of inclusivity for all of the residents here in El Paso. That's what I think the county has espoused, the value of being inclusive, and this, I think, embodies that.
I bet you've heard about Route 66, but what about the Mission Trail? It may be only nine miles long, but it's a very special part of the area near El Paso, and it might just be a fun vacation for the entire family. El Paso County Commissioner of Precinct 13, Eliana Hogan, joins me this morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Daryl, for the invitation.
El Paso. I've heard about El Paso, I've never been, but now I want to hear from you everything I can about El Paso.
And that's why we're here, because we want to invite people to come and get to know El Paso. Specifically, we're kicking off the tourist season along the Mission Trail, which, like you said, is a nine-mile stretch of road encompassing three historic missions. These missions represent about 350 years of our culture, our history, our traditions. On any given weekend, you can still see weddings being performed, quinceañeras, the Tigua cultural dancers. So these are still active missions that are very much a part of the community. We have wonderful art galleries there if you like art, we've got great restaurants, a brewery, cafes, and of course, the Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, which offers free concerts every single weekend.
So I must say, El Paso has to be a must-visit destination, because they don't make documentaries about anything nowadays. There's a documentary that was just made about El Paso.
Yeah, we're very proud of all of the national attention that El Paso is receiving. And just to mention some more recognitions that we're very, very proud of. So for 2023, Texas Travel Magazine named the Mission Trail the best historic site in Texas. And one of the small communities located along the Mission Trail, San Elisario, the city of San Elisario, which is home to the Presidio Chapel of San Elisario, was named the best historic small town in America for 2023 by USA Today.
And what's special that you guys, I'm sure you guys don't have a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer, but there's some special stuff that'll be happening this summer.
Well, on any third Sunday of the month, folks can come down to San Elisario, where we have an art market, we have a lot of wonderful, wonderful local artists who will show off all of their artistry. We also have a reenactment of Billy the Kid breaking into the, what was then the El Paso County Jail to break out a friend of his from jail. So we have some local actors who do a reenactment, and it's just a very fun environment. There's a lot to do, a lot to see, you can walk around, of course, explore the chapel. We also have a lot of great restaurants and new businesses that have opened up. So for example, near the Socorro Mission in Socorro, Texas, we have a new brewery, we have a cafe, we have some great restaurants. And then if you want to go to the Isleta Mission, that's where we, it's located right next to Speaking Rock Entertainment Center, where, as I mentioned, they have a lot of free concerts. You also have a lot of Tigua pottery, so that's the home of the Isleta del Sur Pueblo. So you have a lot of native pottery there. They bake their bread fresh in the oven, so you can see how bread is baked in the old tradition. So it's just really great. There's plenty for everyone to enjoy.
It sounds like it's a lot of history, but you guys have incorporated a lot of entertainment to bring that into learning history about El Paso.
Definitely. So we're really proud of our heritage and our traditions. And one of the neatest things, I think, about the missions is that they're still very active parts of our community. So a lot of times, you go to historical places, and you know, they're roped off, and you can't really go in, you kind of have to see them from afar, and that's not the case with our missions. With our missions, they're still very active, so Mass is still held there on Sundays.
Okay, so for someone who's never been to El Paso, what's the perfect blueprint to really enjoy El Paso for the first time?
Well, we have so much to do, we have so many attractions. So definitely, you know, we want to start with the Mission Trail, we want to invite everyone to come out to the Mission Trail. But we also have water parks, we also have a baseball stadium. So we have a lot to do in El Paso, and I think a lot of times, El Paso is, you know, folks kind of drive through El Paso on their way to somewhere else, but it's just so worth it to stop for a few days and spend time in El Paso. We definitely...
Go ahead.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item 14A, discuss and take appropriate action to decrease the financial and operational impact to El Paso County as it pertains to law enforcement actions by the state, including arrests along the El Paso border.
Judge, Commissioners, Eric Rosales and Guy Leoni, Assistant County Attorney, we're asking for no action on this item at this time.
No action for item 14A. This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Translator's back there. Commissioners, have a great week. Production team, thank you. Everybody else, have a great week. Safe travels, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hogan, you need to give me pointers on our chess match for Saturday.
I don't know if I'm the best.
I haven't played in quite a while.
This concludes today's meeting at 2:23 PM.